What's that? What is that? That's not even a thing. Oh, man.
Force. Force.
Force.
Force.
Force.
Not force.
She can answer it just about anything. Force is like your wife. No, force is not.
You're John Chase or Texas Paul Sheen.
Yeah. She doesn't care what color. I have mine too. I need my hair checked. Well, it's hard.
It is, but I, and I just, I feel like I'm passing.
Huh?
What?
We spell it loud. Oh, we spell that well.
So.
So you have one of your state units and then you get away with some decisions. I really just have state unit after what's been. I do have, I fully booked the.
There will be just. The board's role tonight.
That I'm working on, I'm gonna work with. We're trying to contact me everything to make sure that everything's in an S P C.
Good, good. So it's already recorded to Jennifer.
So is there any decision to make there? Is there any decision to make on anything? Oh, okay. You said it was just to listen, so it isn't.
No, she was asking about some of the questions.
Yes.
So it'll be action item number. Yes?
All right, it's six o'clock. Like to call this regular scheduled order, we'll call.
Mayor here.
Bandy Creek here. Bayland here.
Gergen here.
Thompson here.
We do have a form to request that for.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I am to the power of the United States, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kate, can give us a down to the agenda? Second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. I just want to make a couple of comments on the right. Before typically what we have is citizens' delegation of other times to speak to something that is not on the agenda. So by behalf of the Board of Education, let's thank everyone for joining us this evening, whether that is in person or virtually. We truly appreciate all the emails, letters, and parents and community members have shared with us. Trust me when I say that this board and superintendent wires have read every email and letter this sent. We truly do value your input and you should be heard. I know that we have stakeholders here tonight who have signed up to speak on the topic in-person learning or remote learning. Please know that that topic is connected with an agenda item and is not included in the public forum part of the agenda. You will have an opportunity to speak at that time in our agenda when we're talking about that learning platforms. Is there anybody else has anything to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Okay, let's move forward. Let's make a motion to, I made a motion to approve the consent agenda with consensus. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. For some, yes, our facility dog, Dirk, are you doing the interactions?
I can talk very briefly, but I think the real introduction is gonna come from the dog and handling. Um, we have a really good fortunate relationship with Ashwaban on Public Safety, especially with Officer Dunlop and Officer Everett's. And they are truly part of our, of our learning community, part of our student services team. They are not just, you know, the long arm of the law, but also work with kids, they're also paramedics, they're also firefighters, they're all of those things and they, they are, they're truly important. And we have a new, new member of their, of their squad at school and Officer Everett's is gonna talk a bit about, about who, who's drooling on my, on my outfit here and where, where she came from. And I think people might wanna know where the name comes from, because I always wanna get that straight.
Okay.
And if there are questions I can answer, go ahead, otherwise Officer Everett's.
All right, so this is Force, she can be a facility key behind within the school district, so she'll be able to come with me to all the schools, all the grade levels. Her name is Force and she got that name La Force Incorporated donated a large amount of money for the, the program to be possible. So to honor them, we named her Force. In the schools, the kids I call their Forcey, that sounds like a nice, that's what we do, we call her Forcey. When I got involved with this as an S R O, we just kinda seen some kids struggle with emotional behavioral kind of things, different kind of crises. And even though that we go into schools, we're police officers, we were, this is called a soft uniform, they still see us as law enforcement. A lot of times they may have had a negative interaction with an officer or maybe a family member. So this is an opportunity for us to be able to approach that child that's having that emotional behavioral crisis. It's a non-verbal, non-judgmental way to be able to approach the child. It's also another way to bridge the gap between law enforcement and youth, get an opportunity for them to come up and just ask questions about the dog, in fact, the dog and things like that. So she's two years old, she originally from Hungary. And we got her through Desiphany Kennels, they're out of Iron Ridge, which is down by Lomira. I went to training with her on November fifteenth with a two-week training course with her and she's been with me since then. She's at home with us, so she's in the house with us as a family pet, basically, but then she comes to work with me every day. Unfortunately, with the schools being virtual right now, I am reassigned as a paramedic on a 24-hour shift, but she's able to come to that 24-hour shift with me. Today I was fortunate enough to be a road shift during the 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM timeframe. So we're able to get out into the schools for about two or three hours to interact with the kids, so it was a fun day for her to get out in the boat. She has no typical police dog attributes, so she's not there to detect narcotics, she's not there to chase a bad guy or bite a bad guy. She's there hopefully to put a smile on the kid's face and just come up to her and she just, her job is to be loved on it and she loves that job. She does good at it.
Any questions?
Thank you for taking the time.
Yes.
Yeah, that's great.
This is, yeah, the kids are, they're loving it, so it's, it's well, well worth it, that's for sure.
We're pretty excited about this one. Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Jeff. Just notice for everyone to know how much work Officer Everett's did, the fundraise for this and how much he's taken out of this and as a district, we really appreciate all he's done. And the support from the village as well and the partnership there with Officer Everett's, he's really done a lot here and it's, it's because of him that this is happening.
Well, I did footwork, but I mean, without the, the support of the entire board and the village board too, this, this not, this wouldn't have been able to happen. So, you know, I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to do this. I know it's definitely thinking outside the box, but all the programs that I've, I've seen and talked to with other officers that have it in place, it's only success stories, so. An excellent choice for us and I think we're gonna see a lot of, a lot of good coming.
Thanks to Force as well.
Yeah, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Well, there's a lot of people, maybe out in the foyer or two, that might wanna check Force out as well, so.
Okay, sounds good, thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, now, you got any second agenda? Which system minutes and regular scheduled meeting on Wednesday, November eleventh? Minutes of the exec session held Wednesday, November eleventh. Minutes of special board meeting held Thursday, November nineteenth. Minutes of special board meeting held Monday, November thirtieth. Checks, schedule checks written, scheduled referendum checks written, staffing hiring reservation, absence. There's 24 curriculum, whole curriculum that are being presented. The October budget is also being presented and we also have an audit report and the financial statements.
I'm going to approve that consent agenda.
Okay, second, then motion in the second. Roll call.
Bandy Creek, aye.
Mr. Patel, aye.
Bayland, aye.
Gergen, aye.
Thompson, aye.
Aye, Mary, curious. All right, next, we'll, we'll do the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Jay. As Mr. Lucius just mentioned, I know he's out in the foyer, enjoying some of our team members out there. I'd like also again to thank Officer Everett, Ashwaban Public Safety and Pam Nicholson, our director of student services. Without this team effort and Officer Everett's commitment and tenacity, this wouldn't ever happen, period. And so real credit goes out to Officer Everett and we're very pleased where, where this program's starting to go. D P I grant to Parkview and Ashwaban High School. Two of our social workers, Amy Dillonberg and Laura Breezy, worked with building Hope Squad advisors to apply for a D P I grant to support their efforts. The Parkview team applied for the D P I A O D A grant and the high school team applied for the peer-to-peer grant. Both grants support the work that we are doing to, related to suicide prevention. We're excited to announce that both Hope Squad teams received a thousand dollar grant to continue this work. The Hope Squads we have at Parkview and Ashwaban High School are set up to reduce youth suicide through education, training, and peer intervention. Hope Squad members are nominated by their classmates as trustworthy peers and trained by advisors. We're excited to continue to grow the Hope Squad to connect with students throughout the district. Ashwaban High School District Food Service Team, I know they're gonna be presenting virtually a little bit later in our agenda. I just wanna take a minute to recognize our amazing food service team who continues to provide our students with meals during our remote learning. Caitlin and her team have been fantastic during this entire pandemic. They have continually gone above and beyond to feed our, keep our students fed. Caitlin will present tonight with all of you some staggering numbers during one of her discussion items later on. Parkview Thanksgiving Meal Donations. One of the most favorite traditions at Parkview is helping Parkview students in need and their families during the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. While COVID-19 has altered many traditions, our dedicated staff at Parkview and at Festival Foods, especially Rob Boyd, who is the Festival Foods East Bakery Manager, came through again and made sure that this important act of kindness would still be sure to happen. A total of 10 complete Thanksgiving meals were donated to Parkview families. As something of this nature cannot be done without a team effort, our family consumer education teacher Miss Dawn Rotz and other members of Parkview staff made the desserts to accompany the meals, including pumpkin bread and snickerdoodle cookies. Parkview staff along with Kathy DeCaster and our fire and teachers, Mrs. Jolene Lindauer, worked together to wrap and decorate all the boxes for families. Parkview staff supports the cause by making cash donations to our Casual for Cause Fund, where staff have the opportunity to dress casually in jeans at work. Staff assist in loading up the vehicles and delivering the meals too, it's a real team effort. Again, a special thank you to Rob Boyd, Festival Foods, we are thankful for everyone who participated. Golden Apple nominations, each year the Golden Apple Awards Program improves the community awareness of the quality of education in the Green Bay area by recognizing high standards of professionalism, leadership, and innovation in teaching with the Golden Apples Award. We want to recognize or congratulate 62 Ashwaban High School teachers that were nominated for the Golden Apple Award. The twenty eighth annual Golden Apple Award Ceremony is scheduled for Wednesday, April 21st. The Golden Apple Awards Program is a part of the Green Bay Area Chamber along with school sponsors or major sponsors and area school districts. Some exciting news from our Ashwaban Performing Arts Center. We're excited and thrilled to announce that our Ashwaban Performing Arts Center Director Kate Green was able to secure a grant to the State of Wisconsin COVID Live Music and Entertainment Grant Program in an amount of $35,630.35. The grant will be used to cover lost revenue and provide P P E to the P A C. Great work, Kate Green, so I'm just sure Kate's watching, so thank you, Kate. Finally, Jaguar Excellence Awards. For the month of November, I had the pleasure of emailing out 194 additional Jaguar Excellence Awards to our staff. For those in attendance, our staff are able to nominate each other and other staff who have gone above and beyond. And so each month, typically in a normal year, I go around and hand out these Jaguar Excellence to our staff. You probably have seen that on our Facebook page or on Twitter. And so this is an opportunity for our staff to recognize each other. This brings our total this year to 493 in just three months. Last year we were able to have over 1,000, we are well on beating that record from last year. This is year three and we look forward to our staff to continue doing a great job of recognizing their colleagues. Any questions?
Hey, um, as Kurt said, our next discussion item is food service update. Caitlin, is she on?
I'm here, yep. Hi, everybody. I just really wanted to take a minute to recognize all of the food service staff for the amazing job that they've done. They've been working really non-stop since the middle of March to get food to all these kids. It was amazing to see the work that they did when everyone else was at home in March and April, they still had to come in and prepare the food. And they're continuing to do amazing things. Since the start of the school year, we have served over 103,000 meals to families, which is fantastic. We are currently offering free breakfast, lunch, supper, and snack to any child who's 18 or under, so they don't have to be enrolled in the school district, they just have to be 18 or under. So they get some free meals and it's just been a really awesome opportunity for all of us. They work very, very hard to prepack all these meals and the bulk pickup. It's a difficult process for them because they're, they're packing whole school days with the food in boxes, literally boxes, for the families to take home, which is fantastic. So I couldn't be more grateful to be part of a team that is really stepping up to provide for their community where the need is and especially, you know, being relatively new to the district. While it feels like I've been here for a very long time now, since we've gone through what we have. It's great to have a team that is willing to listen to my suggestions, even when they seem a little bit off the wall, but they've been doing a great job. And for Endor, he's one of the custodians, he's, he's been transporting food back and forth like crazy lately, so I really just wanted to share that information with you guys and let you know how awesome they've done here last few months.
All right, thank you.
I think.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, next discussion item, the five-year budget projection comparison versus state budget backwards. This is exciting stuff.
Well, I think everybody's here because they wanna. My budget always packs me. So while I'm doing this, I will say on Caitlin's presentation, I hope everybody realizes how awesome a job she has done. Because she has had to step in for somebody who had been here for over 20 years and that's big shoes to fill, somebody who did an outstanding job. And then in their first year, we had to go through all these changes and she stepped up and really knocked it out of the park and has done an outstanding job. And the whole team has, the whole team has just done outstanding and they work so hard every day to take care of our community and our kids. It's just amazing to see what they've done. And I am struggling to get this off. Jamie, can you help me? I'm not able to share the screen. Okay, so what we're gonna do today, and I'm gonna make this as brief as I can, we, every year we do a five-year budget, just so we're projecting what's happening in the district and we can look at trends. So I wanna be clear on this, the five-year budget is done at a very high level, it's not our detailed budget that we will be doing in it golden age or whatever. It gives us an idea of how we're looking in the future and lets us look at trends and where things are going. This year it's particularly important because the state budget isn't settled, so there are a lot of variables we need to look at and communicate with our state-level elected officials as they set the state budget, which drives school funding. So as I said, it's a high-level budget, it's for comparison and shows that potential impact of not balancing the budget. That's both, both ones important and I wanna reinforce that to the board, that as we look at these numbers, it always is a little scary when you look at three or four or five years out, what our budget deficit is. That assumes that we don't balance the budget, we've balanced ours every year, but I leave it that way just to reinforce the need to balance the budget with ongoing reductions, not delaying things like delaying a billing project. Because if we delay a billing project, we've gotta do that the next year, plus we still have that whole deficit to cut. So it's important that as we go through the budget process this spring, we're thinking that way and we're aware of that as we, as we work on the budget. So a budget model or a projection is always good as the assumption, so the assumptions that I've worked in here are 2% increase on salaries, which is just a little above C P I, that we've had no change in current staffing levels. So as we look at what's happening with, with student counts, I only anticipate a huge change in staffing, so we've got that locked in. 5% increase on health insurance and dental insurance. And then looking at our, our student counts, our resident count is projecting right now to be very flat. And we're, we're assuming 125 resident, 4K student, it's really hard for us to project 4K students, that's the most challenging number, we don't have a grade on feeding into that. Our head count showing a slight decline and some of that is, is the fact that we've got open enrollment being flat and not increasing in that 125 students in kindergarten. And then our outgoing open enrollment is showing some increases. And that's just a matter of our seniors, senior class and junior class at the high school are very small in open enrollment. And what we're seeing now is, and each year we have a couple new open enrollment and we're adding more new ones than what we're graduating each year on the outreach side. So what are we comparing in, in this graph on this show? School funding options, so the different options that the state has for how they fund schools, because the state really drives our budget through the revenue limit. So you're gonna see blue bars, which are, are meant to show if they give us on the, on the per pupil aid, a hundred dollar increase per student, what does that mean to our budget? The orange bar we're gonna compare to will show a hundred dollars on the revenue limit, so per pupil aid is different than revenue limit and our taxes is different. And that's one of the big things that I'm hoping we'll get some understanding on today, that one funding, at state level, they'll, they'll talk about, talk about them like they're the same, the impact is very different. And then the gray bar is gonna show a $200 per revenue limit per pupil, just so we can see for comparative, okay? If they would do more this year, it was $279. So these are all still pretty conservative, but everything at the state budget level with what's happened to our economy this year, there isn't a lot of information coming out of the state on proposals, so I wanted to give you some ballpark ideas. So one of the things you're gonna see is how each option impacts us differently next year and then how that impact changes as we look forward about five years. And I think it's important to not just look one year at a time, we need to be strategic and look multiple years at a time. So here's the first, the first chart I have is total annual fund ten revenue, so total revenue. So the first set of column, all the way to the left, the blue, the orange, and the gray are just current year budgets, so you see they're all the same. So if we go to the second set, that's next year's budget projected. And what you'll see is the blue, which is the per pupil aid at a hundred dollars per student, we show more revenue than at a hundred dollars per student on the revenue limit. I think that's an important thing and it's kind of an aha moment that we have that if the state is talking about, do they put money into the revenue limit or is it per pupil aid? We are better off in the first year when it's put into per pupil aid. And our community's better off from a tax standpoint that will have less impact on taxes or a lower tax rate as well. So when we're talking with state elected officials or when they're looking at options, that per pupil aid in the first year, we're better off then. So if we go all the way out to 2025, 26, the three columns all the way to the left, you'll see the blue and the orange are pretty much at the same level. So why does that, that it's the same after three years and going forward? That's because in the revenue limit formula, there is a three-year average on student counts and there are hold harmless and declining enrollment protections. So those all factor into those first two years to that revenue limit and not helping our budget as much as per pupil aid. So that's why you see that difference. And then the gray bar you see in next year's budget, the gray bar, which is $200 of revenue limit, comes in exactly the same or almost exactly the same as $100 per pupil aid. So it's just important for us to know that as they talk one option at the state, how that's gonna impact this. But then when you get out to the fourth and fifth year, you look and you see that gray bar is quite a bit higher, so that we get more revenue, our budget, so less budget cuts. If we get $200 per student on the revenue limit as we get out into multiple years. Any questions on that slide? I've only got one more, so if you have questions, that would be a good time. Okay, so then the last thing that, that the budget model helps us with is just give us a ballpark figure on what we're gonna have to do to balance our budget. Anyone who's talked or been paid any attention to our school budget, every year we have to make budget cuts. It's a structural deficit, the way the state model is set up with revenue limit, they don't fund the increases that we have to pay to keep staff. And it just, that's the way the state budget works, we've cut anywhere from $250,000 to a million dollars a year for the last 20 years. And that's, it's, I'm not saying it is a bad thing, that's, that's the world we live in. So what this slide shows us is how much we have to cut to balance a budget each of the, the years to have a balanced budget, which we feel is very important and I, every budget we present before it has been balanced. So what you're looking at is next year, we're looking at budget cuts in the range of 300 to 550,000 dollars. That's what we need to cut next year to balance our budget. Once again, it's a very high-level budget, so there are other things going, no changes to variables like staffing, things like that, that's really where we would make a lot of those cuts. We have to balance things out and we have to balance that with class sizes and what we can do to balance that budget. So it's meant more to give you an idea of where we are and then looking at the five years going out, how much that grows. So if next year we decide we've got fund balance, let's just not balance our budget, not make those tough staffing cuts or those other cuts, what's gonna happen? You see the second year, all of a sudden it's a million, a million and a quarter that we're cutting in budget and if we don't make the cuts the, the first year. So that's where it's important that we get through our budget process in April, that we're putting together a balanced budget, making those tough decisions. And I know it's hard on the board, it's hard on the invisible team as we go through that process, but it's very important that we make those, those tough calls and balance our budget the right way. With that, I know we've got a lot of other things that, not everyone's here for budgets, so I'll finish up unless there are some questions.
It's just one thing, so we mentioned our fund balance. So if we were to use our fund balance to balance our budget, then we've stated the following, correct?
Yes, so as we spend, every additional dollar we spend, we have, we're negatively aided on that incremental dollar. So we lose about 50% of that aid the following year. So in effect, it becomes extra tax levy following year, it doesn't come off our budget, it comes off out of our aids, we have extra levy room in the revenue limit. So it doesn't affect our budgets, but it does affect our aid, so it'll affect taxes.
So consequently, what we basically try to do every single year, we've done it, is balance our budget without touching our fund balance. All right, thanks Keith. Okay, next item is policies for open enrollment, this read.
Yep, so this is a yearly review, this is the first read of this policy. It's one you guys have seen every year, we have to have this yearly review of this policy prior to start of the open enrollment application period. And so the, in January, you'll have the opportunity for the second read along with an approval, Keith will be bringing back you open enrollment seats and the most seats that we can have at each grade level coming back to you.
Does nothing change?
Doesn't change, it's the same policy each year, it just has to go. It just has to go through our first and second read as a school board in every district in the state. So next month in January, we'll bring it back for the second and final read.
All right, let's move on to our exit items. So COVID-19, decision-making guidelines.
So I want to thank Jamie a lot of time and effort on his part. We've worked several weeks on this. And so again, I want to publicly thank Jamie for his work on this. I also want to thank, as Jay mentioned earlier, thank everyone who's here tonight. We appreciate everyone coming. Like Keith mentioned, I'm sure most of you came for the budget item. It's something I look forward to every board meeting. We appreciate the time and effort to listen in on the conversations of our school board meetings and our school board members are discussing. I also want our community to know that school board meetings are meetings that are held in public to conduct school business, but they're not public meetings. And so sometimes there's a misperception of that. Our school board truly values the opinion of our community members and has been open to allowing the public to speak. Just so you know, they're not really required to do that. All school districts do it, but under state law, they really don't have to. But a big part of our being successful is getting input from our community stakeholders. And so that's why we believe strongly in that. This is not something we've heard you do, as I mentioned. However, I really feel confident, I know that they've been under some criticism, but we have an amazing school board who really are tremendous servant leaders. And servant leaders, someone who's serving the community, putting in ungodly amount of time, and we are very blessed with the school board members that we have. And truly, they all, Michelle and Paul virtually, and the board members in front of you today, value the opinions of our stakeholders. As I've said many times, trust me, we have not changed course, and we truly want our students to be in person. I understand the roller coaster of emotions, feeling like we're gonna come back, and then we don't come back. We sympathize with that, and trust me, we want to be in person. There are no easy decisions, probably no right or wrong decisions, but just decisions based on what the board feels is in the ventures of our students and staff. We want, we want parents to advocate for their children. We want parents to advocate for their children. The world would be a much better place if all parents advocated for their children in a positive and respectful manner, without a doubt. I think we all agree to that. We want you to advocate for your children. Those of you who have known me as Principal and Valley View for 10 years clearly understand and how I feel about parents advocating for their children. We need, though, to come together as a community and make a collective commitment to help our students, our staff, our parents, all of you students here too, build value. We plan to take the time when we return on January 11 to recognize where each of our students are at, both academically and emotionally. And you'll see that in our plan tonight. Our job as leaders, staff, parents, and community members is to be brokers of hope, to model for our students how we as adults can rally together to do great things for our students. I received an email today from one of our parents, who's a local physician. It was very exciting to read her email and all the positive steps our healthcare teams in our community are doing to keep us safe and the advancements that they have made to fight the virus. This email was truly a broker of hope for me and the things that she shared. Since we went to our current remote learning platform in October, we have been working on a phased approach, and you guys have heard me say this over and over at meetings. Phase one was kind of looking at some criteria. Phase two was bringing in small groups of students, especially our special needs students, the students with IP's and our ELS services to get them some of the services they need. Phase three, we started bringing in small groups of students who are receiving interventions in the area of reading, students who are at risk, and specialized classes in the area that cannot be near in their remote setting. Chemistry labs, tech ed classes, welding, mechanical engineering, just to name a few. These things have happened sometimes five days a week, and a lot of this, especially at the high school level, has happened on Wednesdays. Phase four, which began on Monday, November 16, was providing our Ashwadana High School students the opportunity to begin co-curriculars, like academic clubs, DAKA math team, Encore, and WI winter athletics. Parkview Middle School will begin co-curriculars on Monday, January 11. We're not sure yet, fight on the timeline for eligibility time this time for co-curriculars, but certainly that is something that we are looking forward to starting as well. Phase five, which would begin Monday, January 11, is our transition to in-person learning. We plan, we will be in-person on January 11. Our hope is to be in-person from January 11 to June 10. I think everybody in this room would agree that would be phenomenal, including myself. At the last couple of board meetings, we have been discussing guidance criteria, criteria that help us make decisions on what learning platform we are going to be in. The board asked Jamie Alverbeck and I to provide a modified model for them to consider that includes more Ashwadana data. Jamie has the start of that on the screen now. What I mean by this is that we have included data about our students and staff into this guidance criteria. We also have included a plan for in-person learning starting on January 11. We also want to be very clear, families, and there's quite a few, who choose or would like to remain virtual, will have that option for the remainder of the studio. Some of our families who started in-person have now chosen and said, we're not quite yet comfortable, you'll have that option for the remainder of the studio to be in virtual. So as you look at our guiding criteria on board members and community, we have three things that we looked at. One is the community CDC core indicator, that is the burden rate of our community, which is, all of you, I'm sure all of you have seen it on our website, right? We're getting tired of looking at these numbers, right? I think that would be the fact. And a very positive thing, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but certainly this is something I live and breathe every day. On 11/30, that burden rate was 919. That's the first time it was below 1,000 in a long time. December 1st, it was 978. December 2nd, 942. December 3rd, 921, 89 on the 4th, all the way down to today at 683. We're very excited about that, feel like we're trending in the right direction. You guys have heard me talk about that word as board members, that we want to be trending down. What does it look like? We're trending up, we're in a very good place right now, and hopefully we can maintain that. The next one is staff absences. All of you remember back when we closed on September 23, we made the decision to close on September 25. One of the big obstacles for us was staff and the amount of people that were on COVID and quarantined, that we didn't have enough staff to cover. As I've mentioned many times, we have worked extremely hard. We've gone and beat the pavement and recruited and got 20 locked-in subs for our teaching staff, so we're very excited about that. So we feel like we're in a very good place in order to handle some staff absences in order so that we don't have to shut down again or go to remote learning again. Our student attendance rate, that's something that we've added now to that, something that we want to look at and evaluate how our students. Jamie and I have talked a little bit more detail about that.
Perfect, awesome. Michelle and Paul, can you hear me if I talk from right here?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Perfect, okay. So I'm not going to go into greater deal of details of what Kurt just talked about. And like I referenced with Kurt this afternoon, I think a good analogy to think about these three things is kind of an engine light, like a check engine light. And I'm gonna come back to that analogy a lot, so just kind of keep that in the back of your mind as we go through that. But you know, the first criteria we're gonna be looking at is really that community criteria, which is based on core indicator one. Something that we're gonna be looking for feedback from you guys, the board tonight, is what is gonna make that check engine light come on? You know, I did some research based on where core indicator one was when we were in-person learning. The highest it ever was was 835. As Kurt said, we're under that number today. The average in September was 442. And of course, the CDC number for the high level of transmission is still 200. It's a kind of interesting role we're in, because Director Redfield and Dr. Fauci have both made comments about schools being back in person, but the CDC has not changed any of their guidelines. They've said some things publicly, but their guidelines still say 200. So as something as we talk about, for the board to think about, for that community indicator, when is a good time for that check engine light to come on? Is it 835, is it 442, is it 200, or is it a different number? And I'll come back to that analogy later. And obviously, the second slide is just what would happen if it was below that number, if we go back above that number to initiate the transfer back to remote learning. So we'd have that kind of option to go back and forth with community. The staff number, this is a little bit more of a fluid thing. And we've talked a little bit about this in past meetings, and I know that that was something that you guys presented us with last, is kind of come up with some better local data. And when I looked through, the average number of daily staff absences from September through November was 30. You know, so what we're looking at for all of these metrics is if we have two out of three consecutive school days of one of these metrics happening, that's when that engine light's gonna come on, and that's gonna tell us, hey, we gotta dig into this and see, can we still provide quality instruction if that's where we're at? So if we have two out of three days where we have more than average staff absences, we gotta look into that and say, what's going on? Now, not every staff absent is the same, and I'll use a great example. Kurt and I can be absent on a school day, and it doesn't really affect teaching and learning. But Allison Aberback...
Get rid of the superintendent.
But Allison Aberback and Carolyn Wires being absent will, because they're both special ed teachers, and that will impact, you know, working with kids. They don't require subs. So you know, so 30 isn't always, you know, we could have 30 absent and 25 to require subs, we could have 30 absent and 12. So that's why it's not a hard and fast rule. It's a check engine light for us to look and see. Also, which I'll show you later in a histogram, there was times in September where we were well above 30, and there were times where we weren't. And I think that's something that we're gonna have to work as an admin team to say, is 30 the right number? Maybe we'll find out that, you know, 30 is doable. Maybe we need to move it up to 35 before we worry about it. Or maybe not, maybe we just need to know that that's a number that we're gonna just keep an eye on and know that not every absence is created equal, and that staff absence is something in general we just have to keep an eye on. So we're looking for guidance if you want a number, if you want it more or not, or if we just report staff absences and we don't really think of it as above or below, we just think of it as a guiding criteria. So that's something we'll look for. Your recommendation on that, and then I have the opposite for if we would transfer back. Student attendance rate. So this really came down to providing quality instruction. And when we talked about this, and we did talk about this with other districts in the area, we kind of reverted back to some of our pre-COVID language. If you remember back to kind of the H1N1 days of when a school might shut down based on too many sicknesses, the number was always right around, was 25%. You know, that's something that we know if 25% of our student body is gone, it's really hard for us to provide quality instruction. Now, that's a fair amount of kids, so we have to figure that out about how, what that looks like. The other caveat I put in this, and I forgot to mention it, is staff. Is both the staff absence and the student attendance rate potentially could happen at the school level? I'm gonna go back to staff. If we had, you know, maybe we only had 20 staff absences, but if 14 are at Cormier, that, we might have to figure out if that's something we can do or not, right? So there's a chance that maybe a school will press pause in in-person learning for a while until we can recover. The same with student attendance. If an individual building would surpass that 25% number, that's a check engine light that we're gonna have to look at and say, do we press pause in that building and let everybody get healthy? If it happens at the district level, we press pause at the district level for everyone to get healthy.
So what, I just sort of want to clear on that, more to clear on that than everyone else. What Jamie's really saying is, we want to avoid at all costs us having to close the entire district and go to remote learning, right? There might be times where we have to shut down a building for a week or so, or whatever the case may be, but we're really trying to avoid having to go to remote K12. Does that make sense to everyone?
So it's kind of, so it's kind of small print in the bottom left, but the bottom left, I do have the averages of student attendance the last three years. You know, our attendance rate district-wide is about 4.3% absentee. We have seen in, from, when we were from September to November, our student absence was about 5.5 to 8.8, so about 6 to 9%. Individual buildings, 612 was, I think, peaked at 18%, and then I think somewhere around my three schools peaked in like 8, 9%. So we're a ways away from that 25 number. We do know that our attendance rate is higher this year for obvious reasons, right? But it's also, it's difficult measuring student attendance when we're remote, because we know that there is, a student might miss a Google Meet and be marked absent, where they would probably be in person if we were in school. Also, the opposite of that, we probably have plenty of kids that participate in remote learning that would have called in sick if we were in person. So we have data moving on both ways on that. So just understand that the data that we're presenting may or may not be 100% true.
Sure. Can you give those same numbers for staff absences for the last years?
Sure.
As a comparison?
I can, I have to give it, I don't have it. But yeah, I can do that.
I would have two questions too. Can you explain the CDC core indicator, how it's calculated, and what it means?
Sure, so the CDC core, sorry, as Kurt said, we look at it all the time. So I think it's literally a tattoo on me right now there. But what the CDC core indicator does, it measures the total number of positives on 14-day range per 100,000 people. So you take the total number of positives in Brown County, you multiply that by the population of Brown County, which is 253,000, and divide it by 100,000 to get that rate.
And the second question is, you know, in light of new quarantine recommendations, and also just quarantine procedures around how long is a teacher out of school based on exposure, and if testing is part of that regimen, to say that if a teacher is exposed, you can shorten that quarantine time.
Sure, yeah, for sure. And that's why, for all of this, why I kind of brought up the whole check engine light thing. Because we're not hard and fast on any of this. It's more about, if we know that we're triggering one of these things, we need to dig in and look at, like as Kurt said, trends. And that's something that, actually, I'll come back, I'll show in a little while. I think I'll answer your question better in a little while. Fine.
Can I make one comment? We asked about staff absences. I think it's important to realize that some pool got cut down significantly this year, because we had a lot of our regular subs who decided they didn't feel comfortable subbing. So it's really hard if we compare last year's absences to this year and when we can do it. So what we could do last year for number of staff absences, and what we could do this year is totally different just because that pool is so much smaller.
I understand that, but I still want comparisons of a trend over the last five years, because we always go through COVID, and we always go through things. So it's not fair to just put a number and time, we need that comparison.
So that was really based on experience. We know that, I mean, we're based on the average amount, and like I said, it's more about, it's a dipstick, just to say, hey, you know, we're above average in absence right now. How are we doing as far as our ability to provide education? That's really what it is.
I also have a question. In regards to the student body, how many of our students have already had COVID in the last three months? And moving forward, how many are still at risk of getting it?
So I, that's something that, and that's a good question we can ask. So what I think what I'll do is, I'm gonna just try to get through this, if that's okay. And then we can open up to the board for questions, and then I guess I'll leave up for the board of our, as far as general questions. Is that good? Okay, so I think I got everything on this page. I did want to show you the board's idea to conceptualize what 25% means. Now, we're thinking about this as far as our ability to do in-person instruction. So these numbers, the percentage of these numbers don't include the students who chose to be virtual. Does that make sense? So for the district to reach 25%, we would need 631 absences, district-wide. The high school would need 203, Parkview 148, Valley View 143, Pioneer 101, and Cormier 72. And again, as we've given parents choices, I put a date on that because those numbers do fluctuate. But just to give you a, conceptually, an idea of what 25% means. And then, you know, what would, you know, obviously trigger those things, that's again, something for you guys to think about. And as far as thinking back, you know, is there, the CDC core indicator one, is it that 835 or 4200, something else that the board would be interested in? You know, around absences, the 30, and then the student attendance rate, 25%. Again, we are putting those out as general recommendations and ideas that ultimately, you know, the board can guide us in a different direction if that's so, if you so choose. What it would look like, and I have a snapshot of what the dashboard would have been yesterday, and I'm sorry, it's a little small. One of the things that I tried to do is I One of the things that I tried to do is I know that our current dashboard has a lot of data, has a lot of information, right? We tried to make it so it was a little bit more simplistic. And as I said, we're showing all these in the last three school days. So that's why there's those three boxes. There's day three, day two, day one, the last three days, right? And we're looking for two out of three to kind of show us a short-term trend. And then there's going to be those checkboxes where if we meet, if we're above whatever those guidelines were, right now it's set for 835, 30, and 25%. That will either be, if it's above, it'll show a red chart micro, if it's below, it's going to show a green check mark. And that's kind of that check engine light thing. If we see one of those, that tells us, hey, we need to dig into this and look at greater detail. When you're in this dashboard in the upper left-hand corner, there'll be secondary pages. And that's where you'll find this historical data. And that's where we'll have the core indicator over time. And as Kurt said, if you look at this chart, you can see since about November 25th, there's been a drastic trend down in core indicator one, our case rate. However, if you, yeah, absolutely. However, if you look at it over time, since we started school, we're still on an incline. But data tells us that right now we've seen a pretty decent decline. Now, I will tell you this, and this is a little bit of nerdiness. Day 16 and day 15 were a pretty high positive rate number. That's why we dropped the last two days. Day 14 and day 13 right now are fairly low numbers. If we test like we have, it's going to go up a little bit these next two days, and then it's going to level out a little bit. So if Brown County continues to test like it has been, however, it is very positive that we're not looking at a four-digit number, right? We're looking at a three-digit number right now, which is nice. And then the staff absences, again, I have two different charts here. The chart on the left is the total daily staff absences, and the one on the right is the COVID-related absences. Both of these are trending down slightly, which is a good thing. If, the chart on the left, that red dotted line is that 30 number. So as you can see, we had plenty of days where we were above 30, and we had days where we were below. And that's why that 30 is more of a just a, if we're two out of three days of 30 or more, we got to look and see, you know, how is it impacting instruction? Because we had days in school in September where we had almost 40 people absent, and we were able to provide instruction. Now, it might have been people that were normally handing out food, handing out food, or other things. So it really depends on the who. So that's why it's, the staffing one is hard, but I think if we agree that it's, give everybody a little flexibility in that, know that that's going to be a little fluid based on who is absent. The student absences one is pretty interesting. We have very high, not, I shouldn't say high rate, we had our highest number of COVID-related absences in September. And that's the chart on the right. You can see that just crashed down when we went in person. However, I mean, when we went remote. However, the chart on the left shows our student absences have been really flat. So our total number of students who have been absent hasn't really changed. And that gets back to what I said earlier about our data. I'm interested to see what our student absence data looks like when we're back in person on January 11th, because I think the reason people call or don't call is going to be very different from December 11th to January 11th because of participation. So that's that chart. And I know I am a very, very fast talker, so I apologize. In general, Kurt, you want to take the next few slides, and then I think we'll.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jamie.
You said the rate of absence, the students have remained flat. What is the number of students that are absent every day?
So we've been right around, we've been around on 9%. So that's anywhere between 250 and 270 since we've been, and that's in a remote.
So once it's determined, the criteria has been met, the trigger transition. Again, you can clearly see that we're trying to come up with some guidance because we want to be in person. If you didn't learn anything from what we just talked about in the last 10 minutes, that is very clear that we want to be in person, we're trying to find a way to be in person. Depending on what decision is made that day, we will, there has to be some type of transition. We don't want to go back to remote learning. We want to stay in person. That's why we said earlier that if there's a building that's struggling with student absences or staff absences, then we'll address that building rather than as a district going to remote. And so that's kind of our goal, okay? Yep.
Will that go into a classroom also instead of, you'll break it down if it's one, if it's one classroom where they're like quarantining, that teacher would go online and the kids, and that one class would go online?
And we did that, Chad, thank you for saying that. We did that this past September. And some of you may or may not know that. We had a classroom that had to be quarantined. That teacher then went remote, and the whole classroom went remote during that time of quarantine. We will do that again. Also, understand, there's going to be bumps, everyone, right? When we come back, there are going to be some bumps. We might have to quarantine a classroom. We might have to quarantine two or three classrooms. We talked to various school districts that are in person. They're in two weeks, out two weeks, in two weeks, out two weeks. It's been pretty consistent for those districts that have been in person all year long. And so understand, there's going to be some bumps. We hope that we are on, right, that broker of hope, that we're out beyond this, vaccine's coming, all of this is going to put us in a really good place, that we don't have as many bumps as some of the other school districts experience. So again, we cannot say it enough. We want to be in person, our goal is to be in person, and we will shut down individual buildings or individual classrooms versus shutting down entire district unless we get to that point. Now, there are things that are above our control from the state level, whether it be the Department of Health or the governor's office. We don't have any control over that, right? Do I think that's going to happen? Absolutely not. Based on my meetings, I meet with state officials every week. I don't feel like there's going to, that's going to happen. Now, again, this is being recorded, and Governor Heaviside's five-star senator. But I don't think that's going to happen. I don't know, okay? But I don't think it's. Again, we cannot say enough that our goal is to be in person, okay? And we will communicate that out to all of you.
And just add, and it's something we talked about and try to commit to, too, is, you know, obviously, it's going to be dependent on the day. But if we know that we have to transition, we're going to try to transition on a Monday if all possible, so that would give you at least a weekend to try to, like, we understand that anytime there's a transition change, it's transportation, it's childcare, things like that. So the idea of what we don't want is a scenario where one day we'll be in one and the next day we'll be in the other, and that's when you'll find out in a short period of time. We're going to try to over-communicate that and put in some kind of transition day or weekend if all possible to get parents.
And then looking at that data, right, over time to say, and Jamie said that whole end check engine light, well, let's just watch it, see how it is, and hopefully it gets better and we're okay, right? And so again, not making a quick decision based on it drops one day or goes up one day.
Because that's been a common, when we've talked with other districts that have been open talking about the problem that they struggle with, it's that rollercoaster effect of going back, coming back, going back. So, you know, obviously, we're going to use the data the best we can to stand, to stay in whenever we can for that period of time. So it's not going to be a rollercoaster.
I know that the peer decided that in elementary schools, they would use 33%. Are you considering using that instead in elementary because they stay in the same classroom?
We did talk about that. You know, the difference at Valley View between the two was like 148 and 163. And we talked about the number of classes that would be quarantined. I think it depends. I mean, and again, it's not hard and fast. Like the gentleman said, you know, if we're quarantining three or four classes, we might be able to go further than 25%. But if it's 25% spread out over a bunch of classes, then maybe not, right? I think, so, yeah, we did talk with the peer about that, but we thought for, kind of, for a general idea that just keeping it the same for everybody would be less confusion, too, just the idea that just sticking with the number. But honestly, when you're looking at, it's a difference between 10 and 12 kids. And I would think that with the way we look at it, it would.
So part of the reason that they chose 33% is because typically, as Chad mentioned earlier, if you quarantine a classroom, not everybody in that classroom might be sick at that time, right? And so you have a little higher percentage of kids, that's why they went to 33%, because you might have to quarantine the entire classroom. And not everybody, just because of the nature of elementary classrooms, everyone's going to be considered a close contact because the kid's moving around in that room, right? So that's why, these are fluid. There's not, we're not saying that this sold on that, but we decided to try to make it easy for everyone to understand, just to keep quiet by the press.
Also, when you, when you say we're going in person on January 11th, does that mean everyone in person?
We're going to get to that next slide. Good question. And just, I, people are going to think I paged you for that.
Just going to finish. We are going to talk about the numbers because it is not decided that it's 25%.
Absolutely. And that's part of this, we're asking for.
All we're doing tonight is presenting to them, okay? Yep.
For the CDC guidelines that are up for, the age, wherever the three that are up for debate, has there been any thought on using, CDC publishes the rate for ages five through 18, and I know that's well below 400. Have they considered using that since that's more pertinent to the school versus the entire population?
So part of that is our access to that data. Brown County right now is only releasing that data to us at the beginning and the middle of every month. If we had daily data on that, I think absolutely that would be something. And that's something that we are in, we are, we have a group that's in dialogue with them. They're, for obvious reasons, they are struggling with capacity, so that they're not always the fastest that we're starting to us. I think they're getting to us when they can. But that's something that we definitely asked about.
So, yeah, please, sorry.
One more question or comment. And really appreciate the school board and the district figuring out how to solve these problems on their own. I would say, too, that, you know, you can open a line of communication to ask the community the things needed to keep the school in-person learning. You know, I know that there's a shortage of subs. It's not like any person in the community is going to sign up to be a sub. But if we knew that you absolutely needed it to stay open for school, I think you'd get a different answer. I would say, too, that, you know, if there are resources that are necessary to make the quarantine better, like providing tests or something along these lines, I would really encourage you to ask the community, because I think everybody is bought into keeping schools open. And so don't try to solve all the problems on your own. Also, reach out to community access for resources.
What's your first name, Jamie?
What's that?
What's your first name?
Luke.
Luke? We email like every day.
My mom is also.
Yes. And your mom does a phenomenon, right? But Luke, great question. And one of the things that we've talked about even as a board is people have committed to helping us out. Teacher subs, we actually feel pretty good about, right? That doesn't mean it's still going to be an issue, but having 20 subs locked in, we feel pretty good about. What we're concerned about is one of the areas is you guys do not want Mr. Wires serving meals at Valley View for seven days like they did last September. And so people have said, we'll volunteer if we know where to volunteer and where to sign up. And so we are considering coming up with some type of Google Doc for people to sign up. Hey, I can volunteer in the kitchen, or I can volunteer on the playground, or I can cover a new, you know, cafeteria. So those are all things that we feel like these can provide an opportunity, to your point, Luke, that people might sign up then in order to be able to help us out. That would be great.
And we're going to talk about that more on the board level in a little while as well.
My name's Tom. I got a couple of questions in regards to the numbers. Have we compared our numbers to places like Milwaukee or Kimberly or some places with a huge population compared to Ashwadha where they have continued to stay in school all year long? I'd like to see what those numbers would be, if that's all possible, compared to our school.
Yeah, I would say on the gaming county, which is going to be Kimberly, Capana, Appleton, their numbers, I would say, is pretty accurate, is pretty close to ours, right? And so to your point, they have had success, but how do you measure success, you know?
I've been to find that they're still in school full-time, and why don't we look at those models to put it in place in our school district so that people aren't family?
Right. And I would say that if you ask some of the people in those districts, they say, yep, we're having some success, but we're also having kids in and out all the time. And so our goal is to make sure that we're in long-term, okay? Jamie?
Yep. You want to show, you want to talk more?
Yep. So here's our plan for coming back on January 11th. We talked about, you guys heard me talk about it, as we got into this, that we are concerned, as all of you are, about the emotional health of our children and want to have them set up on the right foot. So on Monday, January 11th, this is for the board to consider, we are going to have all of our green students, or half our students, come on Monday. And on Tuesday, all of our yellow students would come, this is at the elementary level. And then starting Wednesday, January 13th, we will have all students at the elementary level in school every day, okay? At the high school level, 612 level, we would be in the hybrid model starting on January 11th, and continue that to at least the end of the first semester, and then evaluate our success based on that. Second semester starts on Monday, January 25th, okay? So don't get confused about cohorts by the elementary level. All that means is it's classroom cohorting. And so that would be all students in session starting on Wednesday, January 13th at the elementary level.
All right. As we stated earlier, I know many of you are here to speak about the remote learning or wanting to do in-person learning. We look forward to hearing from input from our parents and community members. The board's rule is to listen and not discuss comments from the community members. Each person will have the opportunity to speak to the board for two minutes. If you choose not to speak and have signed up, that's okay. But you cannot give your two minutes to another person. We also want everyone to know that we all want the same thing, which is the best for our 3,255 students. It's important that we remain civil, kind, respectful in our comments. Jennifer, who's up in the back here, we'll call your name, we'll ask you, if you are here in person, please go over to podium to address the board. If you are joining us virtually, please unmute yourself when Jennifer calls your name. Everyone who is presenting, please start by stating your name and your address. Jennifer calls this one.
Yep, the first person is Luke Vino. You'll have two minutes. I'll remind you at a minute and 45 that you have 15 seconds left. And two minutes, if you could, please wrap it up so the next person can sit.
Thank you. Luke Vino, 1305 Oak Crest Drive. So I'm going to have to adjust my speech based on sort of the discussion that we've already had, which I think is very positive. Really appreciate the school board listening and also appreciate the teachers for all their hard work that they're doing. You know, I've written to the board multiple times and solicited signatures from over 110 families in the community. We just don't think that virtual learning is working, and it's not an effective way to educate children. And really, you know, it's okay for one month to go on this trajectory, it's really okay for two months, but in some shape or form, we've been at it for nine months now. And I think everyone in the room feels like they're being held hostage by the COVID-19 number. The reality is, and why everyone's frustrated, we have no control over those numbers in reality. Like, we can do things like wear masks, or we can do things like, you know, social distancing, but at the end of the day, the numbers are going to move, and they can't be changed by one individual to action. So I guess a little bit about us and our family, you know, my wife and I, we have three kids in the district, nine, seven, and four. I did some numbers just, just sort of to punctuate some points about what nine months is like to a kid. So, you know, as adults, like, our perception of time is way different than kids. You know, nine months, you can basically blink your eyes, and nine months is over with. For my four-year-old son, nine months is 25% of his life. It's almost 100% of his school life. So, you know, in that short time, his brain is still warming, it's still developing. And right now, you know, we all know that screens are addictive and that, you know, there are significant problems in households. Every day, our four-year-old goes to withdrawals. Like he's addicted to drugs or alcohol or cigarettes. It's the same thing every time you take an iPad away from a four-year-old. And I would say that, you know, respectfully, people on the board who don't have children at this age, at this particular time, with this particular technology, just really don't understand what it's like to do that day in and day out, hamstringing the person's family. Okay. I would say too, for our seven-year-old son, he's learning more on YouTube from a twenty-three-year-old being unspeakable than he is from his own teacher right now. In terms of reading and his education and social well-being. So I think that we just need to think about what kids are doing in reality in virtual school. And it's a lot different than the perception of how well virtual school is working.
Thank you.
Take good job.
Number two?
All right. I choose, my name is Heidi Murphy, twenty-five eighty-four, five street. I also have sent a couple of messages and will tailor my response or my, my writing based on the discussion here. But when COVID first entered the discussion last spring, everybody, nobody knew what was happening. It was an unknown. I think everything has kind of evolved since then and it's been remarkable as families, as educators, and as a society. I think we've learned science, our data, and adapted to a new way of living. I also firmly believe all of this information shows us that kids need to be in school. At our house, we do our very best to strike a balance that fits each of us as adults and children in regards to work, overall well-being, education, engagement, and personal fulfillment. Our balance looks different from many other families, but it's ours. Through all of this, it's been impossible for our families to find a balance. We've done our very best to manage expectations, control what we can, let go of what we can, and do what's best for our families. The helplessness of having very little impact in how our kids are navigating this pandemic is frightening, frustrating, and quite frankly, unacceptable. We've added Google Meet to the teachers during the week. We have a weekly meeting set up with the school counselor, which has been phenomenal. She's been great. We've talked to our medical care provider and received referrals for therapy. Since the beginning of the pandemic, I personally started treatment for my own mental health. I threw a tantrum like a two-year-old on week two in my backyard and realized it was time to do something for myself. I don't want to blame the board at all. I don't want to blame teachers or schools. We're all doing our very best. But as a board, I think we need to do better for everyone as a whole. At the beginning of this school year, we emphasized that those uncomfortable within-person learning would have the option to choose virtual. Now I'm asking, where's our option to go in person if we're not comfortable with virtual?
Yes.
I have a bachelor's degree and a substitute teacher license. And my application to be a substitute at Ashwabhanan is sitting in week can right now and hasn't been touched for over a year. So when you say trust you, that you found all of the staffing, I have a hard time trusting that because I have not been called. This school district is highly sought after, and we know that through looking at open enrollment numbers. And I know that coming back next week is probably not viable. But with the plans and the information that you presented about January eleven, I do think that we have a lot of resources available to get us there on January eleventh. And I appreciate that you guys are getting us there. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Havill?
My name's Jackie Havill. I'm at thirteen eighteen Oak Crest Drive, and this is my son Merrick. Four, will be five soon. And he's currently enrolled at Corneary and Fort K. So Merrick, obviously, this is his first year going to school, so he thought it was really cool about going to, going to school in a school bus and was really excited about that. He's actually doing really great work for virtual learning. And I can, I can't take credit for that. He really likes his teachers, Ms. Pavlik, as well as her, I guess, Amy Misslarki. My husband and I work out of the home. Merrick goes to daycare Monday through Friday. Daycare's been super hands-on with helping him with his virtual learning. So I, I'm just really thankful for them. But they've helped. They've helped just with the school and everything. But specifically, I'd like to focus on a little girl named Monroe. She's a five-year-old. She's a kindergartner within the school district. Her story is very different than my son's. For her mom, Monroe often cries on a daily basis and begs her parents to go to school. She misses the interaction with her classmates. She has a lot of difficulty navigating online virtual learning. I mean, that's a five-year-old trying to navigate learning is really hard to comprehend for me. But yeah, just the engagement in classmate, she misses that. So her education is suffering because of virtual learning. Her emotional well-being is suffering because of virtual learning. The parents' finances are suffering as well. So Monroe's parents now have to pay an extra five hundred dollars a month, which might not seem like a lot to some families, but it is to other families. Anyways, her parents are both working, so now they have to have that burden of paying for childcare when, if her child was able to be in school in person, that wouldn't be a problem. So I'm happy to hear that we are potentially going back in January. So thank you for that. But just know that virtual learning is not an ideal environment.
Thank you. Thank you.
Megan Bezinski?
My name is Megan. I live at sixteen zero one Lita Drive. By trade, I work in healthcare. We have always been guided by science and evidence-based practice to support the student. With that in mind, it is imperative that we begin the reopening process of our schools. It is imperative for our children's future, physical health, and mental health. It is science. Science has proven that schools are not super spreaders and top leading infectious disease experts, the CDC, and the American Academy of Pediatrics agree. It is time. In my area of employment, I've had the opportunity to speak with adolescent mental health counselors and inpatient mental health leaders and nurses. What they are seeing is traumatic in itself. The staff is working greater than forty hours per week trying to keep up with the load of adolescent admissions and mental health services. Virtual school is showing an increase in depression and anxiety due to the increase of forced isolation. There's an astounding uptick of children with newly diagnosed mental health issues, including cutting tendencies, suicidal ideation, and anger. While our ICU and ER staff are on the front lines for the global pandemic, our mental health staff is on the front lines for our children. This, unlike COVID, it can be easily reversed by opening the schools. Kids need socialization. They also need a purpose. How many times have we told our kids to stay off of screens? The American Association of Pediatric Ophthalmology also noted virtual learning is driving our children through an epidemic of new insight in this. At my house, my kids are struggling. My husband and I have been essential workers since the pandemic hit. My kids don't have consistency. They are doing virtual school from four to five different locations per week with four to five different caregivers. When you are in first grade, it is difficult to comprehend the information presented to you when you are still struggling to read. It's even more difficult to learn foreign language virtually. Second grade, the concepts of new math and developing writing strategies cannot be developed over a YouTube video. Again, we have been taught to listen to the science. We have been told by top experts to open our schools. Yet here we are, defining science. I work for Bellon Health. Our mantra has been, how are we going to coexist with COVID? That's what I challenge you. Just as a side note too, so Bellon has a COVID task force and they meet almost daily. Much as what they presented today with actual numbers, here are some graphs showing the dramatic decrease over the past fourteen days of the COVID numbers per one hundred thousand. To give you some insights on actual inpatient. Yeah. So inpatient patients, okay? At our peak, we are at upper forty, lower fifties. Today, we are fifteen admissions. It's time to get these kids back at school.
Amen. Susan Hatman? Can't hear, apparently.
My name is Susan Hatman, and I live at thirteen twenty-three Corneary. First of all, I sent several letters and heard that I had the pleasure of talking last Thursday. We are a very proud transplant family. My mother and I moved here from Iowa. We searched this district out to have children in because it was considered the best. And that's been our experience. I have a senior in high school. I have a freshman, and I have a seventh grader. All girls, all have heart of stuff, all who love their school. I just want to take for a second, and we've heard some people talk about younger kids. I want to take a second to acknowledge the class of twenty twenty-one. They've missed their junior prom. They've missed their senior homecoming. Sports that some of them have worked hard at since they were tiny children are being taken away. For a virus that has very small death rate, that ninety, some, some statistics say ninety-nine point six people survived. My freshmen lost the scare of freshman Friday with their sister being a senior, right? And we think those things are small, but they're not. They're things that these kids have looked forward to their whole life. And my baby, she's in seventh grade. And she has ADD that's not been diagnosed because I chose never to medicate her because the teachers at Ashwabhanan have done such a great job connecting with her and giving her ways to learn. She is failing every class. She's become aggressive, and that's not her personality. We are getting her in therapy, but I am imploring you to understand what the class of twenty twenty-one is missing down to the Fort K students. They don't get these moments back in their lives.
Cole Tefo? Cole back up here? Becky Crowell?
Hi, good evening. Thanks for listening tonight, you guys. My name is Dr. Becky Crowell, and I live at seventeen hundred Royal Crown Court in Green Bay. I am the mom of a seventh grader or fifth grader that had to go home this evening to do other things. And I'm here advocating and speaking on their behalf. I'm also a veterinarian and a business owner in this community. I've been open through this entire thing. I've served my patients through all of it. And quite frankly, we did it because we were creative and we are brave. And we're lucky enough to have my husband, who's a stay-at-home dad. But even with him home, we are struggling. Assignments are being missed, concepts are being lost, and learning is not happening in my home. Quite frankly, I'm done threatening my children to do their work. I'm done with arguments. I'm done with watching them cry because they missed a Google Meet or misunderstood the directions or had no clear way to get ahold of their teacher to get an immediate answer on how to proceed. I'm done taking away things from my kids that they love. I am exhausted. My husband is exhausted. He works tirelessly every day to reteach concepts or teach concepts that the kids just aren't getting in virtual. And my children, they look like zombies at the end of the day. They are on those computers for eight-plus hours. They are exhausted. They are depressed. They have worries and anxieties that children should not have. And I am watching a generation be forever changed. And more than anything, their social connections and growth are being lost. My kids are not thriving, and why I'm watching the light literally fade out of them. Let me also note that the irony of tonight's meeting has not been lost on me. This meeting tonight could not be moved to a more appropriate location to accommodate a large crowd due to technology restrictions. Our families deal with this on a daily basis, and we struggle daily to find a solution. We do not have a Jamie at our hands to fix every problem. Open these schools, open them now. You better hold to that January eleventh date, and you better not waiver. Get our kids back where they belong to shine. I'm asking you to have some faith. I'm asking you to be brave. Be leaders for this community and set an example for our kids, for our community. Ashwabhanan has the leadership. Ask us. We all want to participate. We all have gifts to help you. Count on us to have your back. Thank you.
Jalen, are you online?
I didn't hear about that.
Jalen?
No, she, I saw her on the phone. There she is.
Okay. You want to unmute? So that she can't unmute?
Nope, I wonder if she just hung up on us. That's the biggest design feature of all time, right? They put a hangup on right next to the debuff.
Well, if she's trying to come back, she's going to the next one and I'll come back to this.
Susan, we just want to attach her and tell her to come back to it.
Alicia Plummel, she is also online?
Hello, Jalen. Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm doing well.
Okay, hi. My name is Jill Hatman. I'm currently at the preschool. This practice, I think when my coaches have let me come out for a few minutes to talk to you guys. I'm a senior at Ashwabhanan preschool. I have been dancing my whole entire life. I've been on national rugby team for, this will be my fourth year. I was actually supposed to do softball last year, yeah, this year, hopefully. I was also in Florida. I'm also in the gap program, so I was supposed to go to Germany as well. I just want to say, I just wanted to say and jump on here that this has affected me so much. Not academically, I've actually lived with pretty well academically. That would be a totally different case in the beginning of the coronavirus, which nobody really knew what they were doing. So I also had surgery, so it was just completely, my life was just a mess. And I'm finally starting to get better. But mentally, I'm still not able to be there fully anymore emotionally. And it's just, coming to school has just been a regular thing, and I feel like everybody has lost routines. And I'm sorry, so out of breath. I want to say that I am fully in support of the administration and everything. But it's getting really hard to hear our teachers say, we really want you guys back in, we wish you guys to be, but then to look out of the waiver and see that they signed not to go back. And it makes my heart like break. And I talk to people and like, it's just all the same, and we're never going to get these moments back. So it's really hard to not have them, to not have, I'm kidding, to not have all of these different things. And it's not just about that workplace, and it's also about the four creators and every single student and teacher. And if masks are working, why can't we go to school? So what's the fear is in school and, you know, there.
Jalen, you have fifteen seconds.
You know, and it's just, it's really hard. And I think we should go back.
Thank you, Jalen.
Okay, I'm looking for Alicia Plummel. She was either going to come in person or be virtual. And I know she hadn't logged on as of a little bit ago, so is Alicia out there? Alicia? Alicia Plummel? Okay, well, go on. Kim Ricker?
Kim Ricker, live at fourteen seventy-five Emily, and we are an openly enrolled family. And who chose Ashwabhanan because of its reputation. I want to share how virtual learning is for my family. I have a senior. And those of you who know both my kids, he's given up on school. He takes two classes because he was doing NWTC this fall. He doesn't learn anything in physics. He reaches with the Jalen daily to get help. He's not the same happy, jovial kid he was. He's anxious. He keeps not sleep, and he's having panic attacks. He should be, this is not who a senior year should be. He should be having the time of his life right now, going to sporting events, cheering on his friends. He's supposed to be looking forward to going to college and applying. And another thing I'm disappointed about is his counselors have not reached out to him, even check in to see how the process of applying for colleges and if they need anything. Nobody's even reached out to him. So this has been left on us to do, and as my first child goes to college, it's kind of hard. My seventh grader, she does enough to get by. She's in her bedroom all day with the door closed. She comes up for lunch. She's not putting in the effort she would in the classroom because she feels teachers aren't going to notice. If she did, what's the point when they're not personally interacting with her like they would in the classroom? If this wave gene goes on any longer, I'm going to lose my kids because they're becoming shells to them for themselves. Their mental and emotional health is very important to me. And I can see that this is going to become a very big problem in my home, and I don't want to lose my kids. Thank you.
Kelly Spencer? Steven Herman? Becky Brady?
My name is Becky Brady. I live at twelve twenty-four, Grosse Avenue. I am an open enrollment. I chose Ashwabhanan. I chose Ashwabanam because you guys are supposed to be the best. However, the last nine months of our lives do not feel that way. I chose Ashwabanam to continue on studying my kids here this year. During the summer, many thoughts have gone through our heads. Is school going to actually open? Are we going to go in person? Are we going to be forced to do virtual? Private schools seem to have gotten it together. We have thought about choosing a private school instead. They seem to have been more open, flexible, and think outside of the box on how safely they could continue to operate their school. I had hoped Ashwabanam would have done this even because they are expected to be at the forefront of our education and continue to seek such opportunities for their own students. I chose to stay in Ashwabanam, and the plan seemed to be solid that was presented in July. It made scientific sense. However, as we have progressed in the last two months, this no longer makes any sense to us. Our lives do not reflect the same as we did in the beginning of 2020. COVID, keeping COVID out is no longer something that is possible. Our new motto is our workplace and Megan's workplace to coexist with COVID. Many other businesses have done this even. Except for our school district. CDC says over and over that we never recommended for our school districts, of course. The recommendations have been social distancing, wear masks, and have what can or can't be. Our numbers in the last two months at this school district, the numbers have continued to increase even though we are being isolated at our homes. I just want to speak about my child who is in fourth grade. He cries every single day. He wants to be back at school. He misses his friends. I do not fault him for that. Please, on January 11th, get my kids back in school.
Cameron Block?
Good evening. Before I start my, Cameron Block, 1231 Orlando Drive. Before I start my prepared speech, I'd like to say it's a pretty good presentation you put together, Mr. Superintendent. But thanks for all your numbers and everything. One thing that was missed, though, you use the terms quality education several times. My kids aren't getting that right now. So that should not be taken into account when determining whether we should go back to remote learning. My name is Cameron Boyd, 1231 Orlando Drive. Property owner, taxpayer, father of two children, currently enrolled in the Ashwabanam School District. I use the word currently because that's subject to change based on the actions of this board. Your decision to keep my children locked out of the classroom is having a direct impact on their education, mental well-being, their future, and the future of our community. Your decision is not grounded in science. Evidence shows classrooms are not a significant source of spread for COVID-19. Even Dr. Fauci stated the district should move toward reopening schools. Being that there's no scientific basis, it can only be assumed you succumb to the pressure of folks in Madison and DC, politicians out of touch with small-town realities, many of whom send their children to private schools that are conducting in-person learning. Or perhaps you succumb to the pressure of a labor union that only has their dues-paying members in mind instead of the best interest of the children and the community. My family chose to reside in Ashwabanam specifically for the school district. You have a duty to educate my children in the most effective way possible. I entrusted you with those that I hold dear. And you're failing them, you're failing me, and you're failing the community. Thank you.
Jim Dennis? Jim Dennis? Jim Dennis? All right, we'll go on to Annie Gofford.
My name is Annie Gofford, 1274 Pink Ave. Members of the Board, Superintendent Wires, thank you for providing this public forum during tonight's board meeting so we can bring our concerns with virtual learning with expectations of returning to in-person learning very soon. My husband Kevin and I have three kids. A graduate class of 2018, a 10th grader at the high school, and Kristen, an 8th grader at Parkview. We have been school choice, open and roll in family for 15 years. Go Dagors! We love this district, and we are not planning on leaving. I have agreed to share the filing from a parent of a sixth grader at Parkview in order for them to remain anonymous and get through it. The whole story is from the parent's point of view. It started by telling him that he had missed an assignment. After a series of events, he picked up his home book and held it over his head like he was going to throw it. It slipped out of his hand and it crashed to the floor. That's when he said, "I'm so stupid, I'm so stupid." "I don't even want to be alive anymore." And he began hitting himself. His anger had been building up over time. But anytime an 11-year-old says he doesn't want to be alive anymore, that raises some red flags. The mom held him and cried with him. It broke his heart. Finally, I just want to say that closing schools is no longer about COVID. Please review the latest statistics concerning the spread amongst children. It is basically non-existent. This is about our children's mental health and emotional well-being. They need to be in school where they are safe and where direct and immediate feedback is given. Kevin and I, along with many, many parents, implore you to open our schools now. Every child, if their family so chooses, in-person every day. And like other people have said, you need people clean, we'll clean. You need us available for subs, we'll sub. Whatever you need, go do it. The decision to return to in-school learning means that we will be saving our kids' lives. It might just be the most important decision that you as a board member make. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak.
Amanda Massart?
Amanda Massart, 3096 Parkview Court. Thank you for taking the time to do this tonight, even though I clearly said you didn't have to. I am a mom of a seventh grader at Parkview and a second grader at High East. We need to get these kids back in in-person learning where they can thus be supported. It's clear they're struggling in many areas. Academically, my kids are struggling. We have screen fatigue and we spend entirely too much time arguing to get assignments done. Work that would normally be completed in class, but that's part of a teacher, with one or more instructors and peers who can hold a student's principal for their cohort, is not getting done. Remote learning involves setting our own goals, checking progress, and meeting deadlines. These kids don't have the executive, functional skills to do that. They're supposed to be learning them in school. Virtual learning has had a negative impact on these kids' social and psychological well-being. I've seen my kids go from cheerful and motivated to having anxiety about keeping up with their schoolwork and having trouble concentrating with remote work. The increased screen time has impaired their sleep cycle, which has negative health effects as well. Keeping these kids home has also had a negative socioeconomic impact. As a parent, I'm fortunate to work from home as a nurse case manager. I am struggling to balance my work with capabilities and ensuring my kids have completed their work for the day. This multi-casting has impaired my productivity and has the potential to negatively impact my patients in the community who rely on me to coordinate their health and safety. I spend more time working than before and have less quality family time because we're spending time in the evening catching up on schoolwork. And after the kids go to bed, I catch up on my work. It isn't just the kids that are struggling mentally, it's the parents as well. Our family quality function has been impacted. And we see it manifest as irritability, sleep disturbances, feelings of guilt, and sadness. This is not quality instruction. The hybrid model is not conducive to effective learning. It is negatively affecting our kids. I'm fortunate to have mental health resources available to my family today, and we utilize them to build resilience. And worry about the kids that don't have access.
My name is Eric Massart. I'm reading a letter written by my son Nathan in his own words. "Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Nathan Massart. I'm in seventh grade at Parkview. I live at 3096 Parkview Court in Ashwabanam. I have many concerns with virtual learning and want to be back in school in person. Here are some of my reasons. Not seeing my peers in person, I feel lonely and disconnected. Before remote learning, I would wake up motivated to get ready for school. I looked forward to seeing my teachers and my friends. I actually wanted to get up and go to school. Now I feel unmotivated, and I struggle to find a reason to get up in the morning. I am less physically active. I don't walk from class to class and are missing the structured activities we normally do in school. It is harder to do schoolwork because it's harder to see material online versus being hands-on. I learn best hands-on. This way of learning is not allowing me to learn at my best. It is easier to do projects in class versus virtually because in class, you have a teacher's direct support and immediate feedback when needed. I struggle at home when I have to wait to complete something that I have, I could have completed easily within a class period. I feel overwhelmed because there is so much to do each day and not much time and instruction. Sometimes, teachers teach only for a few minutes, then leave us to complete work without enough instruction. I feel tired and bored in virtual class as I do not feel I have enough interaction. Troubleshooting technical issues takes time away from my learning, and I sometimes miss instructions or class time due to this. It is frustrating. I do not feel the school is properly equipped for effective remote learning. Some kids do not have good Wi-Fi and struggle with having multiple tabs open and being able to use their resources effectively. Classes like band guitar choir are difficult to complete virtually. I feel cheated as all we do sometimes is clapping and not much actual playing. Music is essential, and these classes you cannot do over a computer, especially with technical issues. Thank you."
Casey Moynihan? Casey?
Hi, I'm Casey Moynihan. I live at 2975 Wombury Lane. And first of all, thank you for the opportunity to have this session. I'm here to support the parents with younger children. My son is a senior. He's basically lost his last year and a half of education. He knows there's a missed out on opportunities that they normally could have been recognized for. Therefore, they're losing opportunities that could positively affect their future endeavors. So going forward as a parent, things that I think I've heard, I'm just trying to support these younger parents because I can't imagine what they're going through, would like to see ways to see the school open full-time. Partner with the schools that are already open. Partner with them to see how they're successful in making their school days work. Look at the science of transmission of the virus in school. I read recently that you received a large amount of money as a grant for your PPE and protecting your staff and your students. Use it. You know, what is it for if you're not going to use it? Look, to be more concerned with the mental health, as we've heard many times, it has lasting effect on children. As a side note, I've seen an elevation of mood in my house just due to the co-curriculars opening. My son's very happy to be back at his wrestling team. Don't send out surveys until you're ready to listen. I barely had my survey submitted the last time. He came downstairs and said, "Mom, the teachers are having a meeting. We're not going back to school." That demonstrates, one, a lack of professionalism. And as a parent, doesn't make me feel heard. With virtual school, what motivates the student to want to wake up at 8:00 AM for 10 to 20 minutes of instruction? I understand firsthand what it entails to be a central worker. I get the challenges of the changes that have taken place. The cleaning, the social distancing, the use of PPE, the effects of losing staff to quarantine or illness. It has made us all learn to persevere each day to meet the needs of the department. I also see the struggles when working parents have to work with virtual. So just lastly, a quote from one of your senior students. "The community is currently being robbed of the education that each student deserves." Thank you.
Michelle and Tim Bowen? I'll let you know when you're at the two-minute mark.
Michelle Bowen, 2253 Barbary Lane. My husband and I have three boys. All different personalities, all different ages, all impacted in different ways. My oldest is in first grade and suffers from significant anxiety. The first day of school, I physically forced him into the building while his teacher pulled from the other direction. A new school and a new class put him outside his comfort zone. Right now, he loves being at home. He's happy as ever. But let's be real, it's hot, what's best for him? It is our responsibility to ensure he's a kid to thrive in school and in life. And right now, we are killing him. We are all killing him. Our middle son is in 4K, and I'm focused on what academic impacts for him. His assignments are way too easy. He's bored out of his mind. His teacher has been amazing, I will say that. She's given us extra material to challenge him, and I'm grateful for that. But it comes down to tie, and he's still expected to complete his normal assignments. And at five years old, he doesn't have the attention span to do that and then do extra to get him more advanced. And then I worry about when he's back in school. What is he going to do when his classmates have to catch up to him? No one wins in that situation. Our youngest is only four, not in school yet, but the impacts still matter because it's reality for a lot of families. Mom and dad's attention are being given to the older siblings. The four-year-old has less. He's having mood changes, and the iPad addiction and behavior changes as well. It's a lot for a four-year-old to understand. I will add, I say, this is just the impacts to our children. I urge you to remember the 3,200-some students that are in this district, and they are all impacted as well, all in different ways. And all are impacted. They all matter at the end of the day. All of these impacts matter. The parents were given a choice at the beginning of the year to keep their child home if they felt it was necessary. I think it's only fair to also give the choice to parents if they feel it felt more beneficial to send their child in person. I appreciate this opportunity.
My name is Tim Bowen. I live at 2253 Barbary Lane. I've also heard a lot about the fears from the public school teachers that are scared to be teaching the children in class. I think it's important to go over a few scenarios about other professionals and what they're facing. A surgeon who is scared to be in contact with their patient can't perform surgery from home. They can't send a 15-minute video clip to their patient and say, "Here's how it goes. I'll be online Wednesday if you have any questions for me." If the surgeon is scared, they need to face their fears. Daycare centers have remained open the entire time, which is interesting. If daycares are open, why can't my kid be in class? Teachers, the daycare teachers are taking care of our children. They can't send a 15-minute video to us and say, "This is how you take care of your kid. By the way, put the $500 a week check in the mail, we'll still cash it." If the daycare worker is scared, they need to face their fears as well. I work for a large commercial construction company that does millions and millions of dollars worth of work at the school district in the area. Get back in the classroom.
Brett VanderWaal?
My name is Brett VanderWaal, ten-eight-nine Orlando Drive, Jay's neighbor. All school board members, I came here today to plead you to please open our schools, specifically the elementary schools because that's what impacts my family the most. Although I can speak for the high school, middle school parents who I'm sure are struggling mightily also. I'm the father of three young girls and we transferred to Valley View last year from the Pro Field system. They've been pretty much virtual from us a year straight. The kids are broken, the parents are stressed beyond belief, in many cases, the teachers are stressed beyond belief also. This community is reeling in hopeless due to decisions of this administration and the board supporting these draconian radical lockdowns of our children. One more day is simply too much. There's absolutely no difference between opening tomorrow and opening January eleventh. The numbers will be the same, there'll be more, there'll be a little bit less. The district is at nine months to figure this out. The entire state of Wisconsin is pretty much operating as normal with the exception of our schools. Why do you guys support these lockdowns? Most people in the community have returned to work. I'm on the administrative team. We have over six hundred employees and no one was ever offered the opportunity to work from home. We've all adapted, evolved, and created an environment that is safe for everyone. Why hasn't Eschewahbun and the school district done the same? It's okay to disagree with the superintendent's recommendations. There needs to be a system of checks and balances. That's your role, school board. I do understand the importance of collaboration, however, right now it seems that proposal is made and everyone just reluctantly agrees. Disagreements breed results, foster growth and change. I'm asking you to reconsider, think, and vote on getting these children back to our schools. Look at the neighboring communities, the blueprint is already been written. It's possible. January eleventh was too late. You guys need to heal this community and heal these kids. Thank you.
Michelle Noman?
Hello. Hi. All right, I did not come prepared. I don't know what I'm going to say. I could go on about my daughter who's sixteen, a junior, and all her struggles, but obviously I am no different than anybody else that have already spoken. I'm here because I have no idea who you guys are and I was curious what the school board is. I'm not happy with the decisions that's been made and I don't know if I'm allowed to ask, but do you have kids in the school? Can you even relate to any of these people? Am I allowed to ask them or they can't talk? I mean, I really, that's why I'm here. I want to look you guys in the eyes because you guys are the ones that are making my life hell at home. So I want, just holding you humble.
Is Brett out there?
Hi, thanks for allowing me to speak and thank you for always serving me in what you're doing. I have a daughter who is in high school as a junior. She's a transfer from a pretty good school and she's been in school, originally, she's been in there maybe three or four days when we were going at the hybrid. I don't even know if she knows where everything is and who everyone she needs to talk to about because we went to the virtual so quick. I think there's a big disconnect from students to teachers, that quality of relationship that you have, that you're an inspiration from, that you want to be. And we're missing that also in other areas like the guidance counselor that we have to be in. She's going to be looking for colleges and stuff and she's our first one, so we need to learn how to do that. And having these interpersonal communications is a real key. She doesn't have really any friends there yet because she hasn't formed any kind of not being there. And that's just the critical thing for all to look back in our lives of growing up in high school, it's relationships. That's where all the reunions are for, correct? And she doesn't have that yet. And I put the responsibility on you guys because I think everybody here wants the school still open and to do that. It's time for us to be leaders and to not be afraid.
Brooke?
I think you may skip the name. I signed up really early.
She signed up before me.
Yeah, she's all this.
Brooke Sarek, fifteen seventy, Conroe's Ave. I've been coming to every single board meeting in person since the decision was made to go virtual, so much so that I think they made fun of me for it. And at these meetings, it's been my goal to advocate for the child, the whole child. While making schools virtual reduces the risk physically, it increases the risk tenfold for children mentally, emotionally, and socially. My daughter is emotional in nature and has had a few run-ins with the guidance counselor because of this, especially because her sister has medical problems and she worries. Not once has anyone reached out to her for emotional support, even though she isn't seen in the past. If this were at school, this would not happen. We are failing our kids emotionally. Elementary school kids are supposed to be learning the foundation of reading, writing, math, science, et cetera, that they will build on for the rest of their educational careers. Their education is being watered down and will impact them through high school. Although the teachers are doing a fantastic job, it just does not compare to being in person. When they go back to school, the social step, social gap that existed will be even larger. Those kids who have resources at home to help them continue their education will far exceed those that did not have the resources. If the classrooms operate like everybody receives sufficient help with their education or slows it down for those kids that didn't, kids in the opposite boat will fail. We are failing our kids educationally. Both of my daughters used to love going to school. They were excited to go almost every day and succeeded. To now look at one of them and see the anxiety that grows inside her as she watches the videos and takes virtual tests break my heart. I can only do so much coaching as a parent to help her through it. I fear that this anxiety she has developed will carry with her long, fast virtual learning. We are failing our kids mentally and less socially. We are all aware of the social hardships that we put on our children. I'm thrilled sports and clubs are able to hold practices and games. However, this was only done at one level and unfortunately it was done, not done at the grade levels that need it most and at the grade levels that the board has even set are suffering the most, elementary schools. We are failing our kids socially. I encourage you to approve the plan and get these kids back in person. These kids need their teachers.
Sasha, I'm sorry. That's a team. I'm really sorry. You should have been like number four.
I'm Tasha Malva, fourteen sixty-five Avondale Drive. I'm an SLP in the Green Bay School District and so I know what it's like to work hard to serve my students in this virtual mode that has been forced on us. But first, I am a mom to four amazing kids in this district that are my pride and joy and I just want to give you a snapshot of our days right now. I wake up at five every day to be at my computer by five-thirty so I can get as much done as I can before my kids' day has to start. My kids are great students and they have always enjoyed school, all of them. And now it takes two or three times to get most of them out of bed and there is no excitement for school for any of them. So I get them moving and I log in for my speech sessions with my own students throughout the day and I'm thankful that I'm at home so I can check on them between appointments on any given day. Here's some things I might find. One's on his bed with his phone while listening to his teacher with his camera off. One is still sleeping and he tells me, why didn't you wake me up? I missed a call. I did, three times. One's crying on her bed because she doesn't understand a lesson and one's just petting the cat and having started his work. I have five or maybe ten minutes to try to get them back on track before my next session. One child thrives and succeeds when he's in school. At home, he yells at me daily when his school works. I've had to get used to hearing phrases that would pierce any mom's heart. I hate this. I'm quitting school. I hate you. I'm running away. I hate my life. He is eight. Sometimes I have to leave him in tears, wipe my own tears away, pass through a fake smile on my face and jump in front of the computer to greet my students on the other end of the screen. And sometimes they've just had a similar meltdown in their own house. These kids are grieving. These kids are suffering mental and emotional trauma. My adult brain can hardly handle it and yet we're expecting these young, developing brains to process it. Why? I know what my kids need, bring them back to school. And I get that before Christmas is probably unrealistic, but I don't see any valid reason why we can't aim for January fourth. And we need to consider more than hybrid, even for the middle and high school. It's just not enough. Thank you.
Amy Bogos?
I'm Sophie Bogos. I live at one, fourteen eighty West Marlborough Road. We need to go back to school. There are so many more distractions at home than at school, like siblings and pets. People engage less during Google meets. Multiple times in one Google meet, multiple students did not respond to the teacher's question in any way at all. I wanted to be a teacher most of my life, but online learning has made me rethink that decision. In some classes, there are projects that we can't complete since we aren't in school. I'm not getting the school experience that I would have hoped for. I'm missing out on seeing my friends. I'm missing out on after-school activities that I wait for all year long. I miss... Okay. Along with after-school activities, online learning has prevented everyone from taking star and glory tests, which I worked hard not to get a high enough score to get into the advanced math group. If I can't take the test, I won't know what I need to work on. Online learning has taken all of this away. Please reopen the school.
Michael Roder? Michael Roder? Okay.
Good evening and thank you for your time. My name is Michael James Roder. I live at seven-nine-six Glory Road. I'm a thirty-seven-year-old and I have never held an address outside of Eschewahbun. This is my community. This is my village, the place I raise my children, and I currently see my neighbors Two minutes is not enough time for me to express everything that is in my heart and mind. I feel pressured to communicate my deep concern with such few words. When it comes to opening schools, I truly feel the risk is completely worth the reward for the sake of the children. They can and must be brought together safely as soon as possible. The entire community can provide support should staffing fall short. I firmly believe the issue at hand is that the impact of social isolation on our children is immeasurable. There is no metric nor enough professionals to properly evaluate every single student in the system and their current state of mind. We implement community schooling to enrich the experience and allow for a shared knowledge base. The gathering of learners provides nourishment that cannot be duplicated virtually. I continue to see articles of increased childhood suicides, so I must ask this question. How many of you would be willing to step into your neighbor's burning house if you heard their child screaming for help? How many of you would take that whole family in that night if they lost everything? How far are you willing to go for your community and your neighbors? We need everyone to help the kids. We must work together. We cannot stand opposed glaring at statistics. We cannot lose sight of those children who right now may be unseen. They need each other, they need their teachers, their staff members, their community. I know we will not resolve this in one night, so I propose we continue this forum in a larger venue under moderation until we come up with a satisfactory solution for all sides. I truly believe we can. I have to believe that for our children's sake. Thank you.
Bill O'Ryan? All right, I'll let you know when two minutes are up so then you can tell.
I just want to thank you guys. Thank everybody for coming here. Thank you most of all to the awesome parents that have come and shared their stories and shared about their personal experiences at home. Everybody's got their own story, everybody's got their own experience, especially the students. The students are just fantastic, just hearing from them. So we've got four kids. We've got three that are in the Eschewahbun School System right now. We have one that's in kindergarten, or no, preschool, and she's at Montessori and she's been there in Eschewahbun, down the street from the grade school, and she's been in school the entire time. Our kids have been struggling, you know, but we're thankful that we have our family support at home. But really, I mean, I can't say anything that it hasn't already been said. The only thing I can say is as board members, I know you guys all have other things on your plate, right? You guys don't have kids that are our age or that are, that are younger, school-aged kids, mostly. If you do, really, the only question I want to ask you guys and something I want you guys to think about is when you leave here, you know, think about all these stories, think about these people. But if you're not sitting in that seat right now because of the children, then you need to rethink about your position.
Hello, my name is Shayna O'Ryan. I'm a former Loma family here, two-nine-nine-nine, St. Orange Road, and they were constantly helping us. Thank you for your time. Thank you for having us here. I know it's a big deal. I want to thank the teachers as well. We're going to choose our heart. We hear that, right, you guys? This is all hard. It's hard on us, it's hard on you, can only imagine, because I know there's legalities, there's formalities, there are definitely things out of our control, right? But we're going to control the controllable. I'm in medical sales, I cover three states. I often work with directors of orthopedic surgery. So I write contracts. I do a lot and I'm a challenger by nature. First thing I'm going to do is challenge you. Thank you, Kurt, for writing over a page and a half of notes from tonight alone. Unfortunately, I've not seen everybody take notes. My job in sales is to be observant. Jamie, I'd love to invite you over here. I'm not sure how important it is with your phone, but I really appreciate you being here, your analytics. I'm also analytical spirit and I present clinical data daily. I know how to make it work. Right, doctor? Got it. So with that, I welcome that. Definitely want to dive in a little bit, but would like to ask a few questions. So I'm going to just challenge a series of questions. Do you want to take up a pen and pencil? Great, I'll also submit it as well. So similar to the date in September that students had to be in attendance for you guys to meet your budget, is there a similar date in January and what is that? And she's at Montessori, and she's been there in Ashwabhanan, down the street from the grade school. And she's been in school the entire time. Our kids have been struggling, you know, but we're thankful that we have our family support at home. But really, I mean, I can't say anything that it hasn't already been said. The only thing I can say is as board members, I know you guys all have other things on your plate, right? You guys don't have kids that are our age or that are younger, school-aged kids, mostly. If you do, really, the only question I want to ask you guys, and something I want you guys to think about is when you leave here, you know, think about all these stories, think about all these people. But if you're not sitting in that seat right now because of the children, then you need to rethink about your position.
Yeah, thanks.
Hello, my name is Shayna O'Ryan. I'm opening a loan on family here, 2999 St. Orange Road. Thank you for your time. Thank you for having us here. I know it's a big deal. I want to thank the teachers as well. We're going to choose our heart. We hear that, right, you guys? This is all hard. It's hard on us. It's hard on you. Can only imagine, because I know there's legalities, there's formalities, there are definitely things out of our control, right? But we're going to control the controllable. I'm in medical sales. I cover three states. I often work with directors of orthopedic surgery. So I write contracts. I do a lot, and I'm a challenger by nature. First thing I'm going to do is challenge you. Thank you, Kurt, for writing over a page and a half of notes from tonight alone. Unfortunately, I've not seen everybody take notes. My job in sales is to be observant. Jamie, I'd love to invite you over here. I'm not sure how important it is with your phone, but I really appreciate you being here, your analytics. I'm also analytical spirit, and I present clinical data daily. I know how to make it work. Right, doctor? Got it. So with that, I welcome that. Definitely want to dive in a little bit, but would like to ask a few questions. So I'm going to just challenge a series of questions. Do you want to take up a pen and pencil? Great, I'll also submit it as well. So similar to the date in September, that students had to be in attendance for you guys to meet your budget key, is there a similar date in January? And what is that?
So that doesn't count. Just so everyone's clear on that. There's no financial gain, virtual or in-person. Just clear that up right away.
Got it. Thank you. Definitely want to know what the criteria is to close down again, because we know the holiday is coming. I appreciate January 11th, but we know the rates are going to go up. It's anticipated. It's only logical. Yep. So will you have the expectations of teachers to sign the grievance? And how are you tracking accountability? I want to understand how a teacher can be fearful to go back into school, and that's a real fear. I get it. But when I read the document, I don't understand how anybody could ever feel safe to go back. I'm just very curious. Thank you. Are there any current conflicts of interest on our board? Do you guys have spouses who are on education? Or do you own a local business that you don't want to, like, disrupt the waters on? I would like to request an email and memos pertaining to COVID and school closures from you and your board. I would like all emails, please. I'll follow up with that. And then I would be curious as well. How many classes have you logged into and reviewed, virtually, each of you? How many classes have you guys gone on and logged on to?
I would say many, just so you know.
That's good. I would love to hear back. I think we'd like to know. Yes.
I have three kids too, so I have two high schoolers, two high schoolers.
Lucas Johnet? Sorry, please.
Good evening, school board. My name's Luke Johnet. I live in Ashwabhanan. I have two children in elementary school at Valley View. My children, along with other children in elementary grades, need to be in school in real-person learning sessions. Our fourth grader, it takes him about two hours at most to do his work, and our first grader, an hour at most, to complete their assignments with the remote learning day. In addition, Wednesdays are always a catch-up day, which ends up being a full day of lost learning. Also, inappropriate behavior is witnessed on a daily basis on the remote learning sessions, on the Google class meets with our fourth grader, and it becomes a big laughing session. Another thing I'd like to mention is the respect a child gives a parent about learning versus the respect a teacher gets. It's not the same. As parents, it is very difficult to teach children because they don't understand our way of teaching them versus the new style and platform and common core way of today's teaching strategies. My children ask every day, "When can we go back to school?" And say repeatedly that they want to be in school, and when as far as making signs asking them to be back in school. They ask me, "Daddy, why do you have to go to work every day at the hospital when I can't go to school?" Mr. Wyers stated that they have new sanitizers, equipment, and a lot of sanitizers. So why aren't we using it? My children think the balls in the gym are just getting sanitized. The interaction with the other students and how they are learning is going to stick with our children in the future, and our children are the future. As parents, my wife and I are very flexible employers, but the time is coming to an end, and life is what it is with COVID or not. Our children might not be able to participate in daytime learning of the remote because they are going to be at a daycare center that does not have good internet connection for them. And at some point, parents need to keep their jobs to keep their children fed and clothed in a roof over their head. Dr. Fauci says, "Get the kids back in school." Dr. Ryan has never taken his kids out of school. I have one question. Can so many of the less-funded parochial schools and rural school districts stay open this entire time? And we can't. I have 10 people that are retired teachers and medical professionals that are willing to come in and work. In closing, in respect, I ask that you give us, the parents, the ability to choose if we want our children back in school or not, or keep remote learning. This is a choice we were to be given in the beginning of the year, and we are asking for that ability again. Thank you.
Nicole Coleman?
She's not here.
Tom Conley?
Hello, Tom Conley. Hope to roll with Tasha Court, Valley View, Corbier, and I have one in Nicole, which has remained open the whole time. Everybody's been pretty pleasant. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be by nature, unfortunately. I'm severely disappointed in this board. I took an oath to the city of Green Bay, Brown County. I'm exposed every single day to every virus under the sun, and I still don't have it. No symptoms. Haven't been tested positive. You guys need to get these kids back in school. There's no reason, no rhyme, they need to be back in school. Teachers, I'm sorry, but you took an oath too. You are in-person learning people. That's what you signed up for. That's it. There's no ands or buts about it. You have no more risk than I do, going on a daily basis, going out into people's houses, exposed in nursing homes to whatever I don't know. But I'm fine, because I took that oath. And you took the oath to better these children and to stand up for them and make sure that happens. And you're not. You're failing. I'm sick of listening to my kids yell and scream and cry every single day because of school. They can't see their friends, no social contact, and frankly, unacceptable. You guys need to change. You signed up for this position. You made these choices. Deal with it. Put them back in school, or you are not going to be on this board next time the elections come around. This is completely unacceptable. I'm sorry. I understand you've got kids in class, stuff like that too, but you can't sit here quiet. Like Brett said, it's okay to disagree with them. Obviously, I'm pretty strong opinion. Whoops. Let's get along with this thing that everybody's talking, that nobody's cared about all day. Everybody's been touching this. Every single time. It's not standing, right? Right? Let's punch it. If masks work, let's go back to school. We got it. I didn't get a choice. Fire department didn't get a choice. Healthcare workers didn't get a choice. Everybody else, put food on their table, didn't get a choice. These kids will make it. Thank you.
Jenny Conley? I mean, I'm sorry, Jenny Schubrin? I'm sorry. Jenny Schubrin? She's here. Who's with the children?
My name is Jenny Schubrin, 2749 West Corbier. I have five kids at home, ages 12 to 19, two of which graduated from AHS. And I have two that are in school right now. One is a sophomore, and one is in sixth grade. Two have graduated Jordan District. Three are in counseling, and zero are in school now because of COVID. We value the education in our home. My husband was a teacher for many years, including at Green Bay School. I have homeschooled my kids. We have sent our kids to parochial school. We have done charter school, and we have chosen Ashwabhanan because of Ashwabhanan. And I have put trust in Ashwabhanan. I have done, I've never come to a meeting because I just trusted your things, and I'm here today because I feel like my kids need to be heard. My kid, I'm going to talk about my sixth grader, who is, was so motivated. This kid got up every morning. He got into school. He, I didn't have to do anything in the morning with this child. And now I can barely get him out of bed. I can, he rolls out of bed, goes, lays on the couch. And by laying on the couch, I mean sprawling out. I mean, like, maybe feet are up in the air. Maybe, maybe he has a screen on, maybe not. And I let him, because you know why? I'm done fighting with him. I'm done fighting with him, and now because of that, education has come low on our priority because of the mental health of my child and the relationships under that roof. We have seven people under that roof that have to coexist right now, and it's exhausting for each one of us. We are at, he had a breaking point, and that's when we decided, no more. We are not going to make this a thing anymore. So his grades are slipping, and we are letting them, because it's not worth it. And every day that he is not in school, the gap gets bigger. And when those teachers come back and have to teach my kid, he is going to be the lowest common denominator, and that's who they're going to have to teach to. And I'm sorry that that's going to be my kid, and I'm sorry to all you guys who are busting your asses to get your kids at a higher level. My kid's going to be on the bottom, and I'm sorry, but that's what we have to do in our house. Get them in the schools, please, because that gap keeps getting bigger. Thank you.
Beth Mader?
I brought props. Yeah.
Good evening, all of you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak again tonight. I spoke back in October when gating criteria was discussed, and I felt this was very important to speak again. So I appreciate the opportunity. First of all, thank you again for all the hard work on the reopening plan. It was an awesome plan. I don't know what has changed. I know community spread has increased, but that hasn't changed in our district. And when our state shut down in March, we were told, we were promised that all we needed was two weeks, two weeks to flatten the curve. That was now 38 weeks ago. 38. And I would love to ask the board a question. I know, Kurt, you probably know this, and Keith, and maybe Jenny, and I know you can't answer this, but I'd love to know if you know how many days of in-person learning our kids have had since March? How many? I'm Beth Mader, by the way, 268 Arabian Way, got that card, and we open and roll into the district. I can give you that answer. I have a high school junior, a high school freshman, and a fifth grader at Valley View. My son at Valley View has had 16 days of in-person since March. 16. My freshman has had nine days of in-person since March. And my junior has had eight days of in-person since March. How is that acceptable? That is not learning. That is not education. Ultimately, as our superintendent and our school board, our number one concern is for the students and staff in this district, not in DePere, not in Howard Swamaco, not in Pulaski. Neither is our school district responsible for the health of a county of 267,000 people. This is the, this is what I brought you to look at. This is the data that you should be looking at. These are the deaths in Brown County. There've been 115 in Brown County since March. And I have handouts that I will give you as well. But the bottom line is that our schools are essential. Our kids need to be back in school. How do we justify staying closed and learning at this, learning at this level with these statistics? Jamie, I'm right there with you. I love data. This is data to be looking at. And I would really encourage you to, when you make decisions about whether or not to keep schools closed, look at this data. Look at suicides. It's a miracle there has not been one in our district, in our county.
Fidel Silva? This one is online. Nina Bang?
Yeah, so, so my name is Nina Bang. I live at 1155 Forest and Berlin. I have four kids in the district. I have one at Valley View, one at Hopeview, and one is a freshman at high school. I work as a nurse, so I have been working this entire time, five, six, seven, 14 days in a row. So my kids are on their own. My husband also works, so we are not at home the majority of the day. I feel that when I have been at home in the morning, we try to get the kids going to the master. The kids do not want to get out. They do not like school. I am very fortunate that they do not struggle in school. They are able to do their work when they feel like it. The engagement with the teachers is very, very minimal. It's actually been very disheartening to watch them as neurotiated kids. They are always participating in class. They're very social kids. To see them now sitting in a room, turning off their mics, turning off their camera, not being raised, having 10 to 15-minute meets with the teacher, middle school and high school kids, 10 to 15-minute meets with the teacher, nothing else. Then to watch my, my elementary school kids, same thing. I mean, my competitor doesn't have a meet until 9:00 AM. They do 9:00 AM to 9:15 maybe. Occasionally, a couple other times throughout the week they'll have an active meet, but that is it. She is the one that definitely struggles the most, just because she doesn't want to do it. She tells me she doesn't care. The teacher don't care. Nobody cares if she does her work. There's something in the past that doesn't matter. It's very hard to hear the parents. I also did get a hold of that grievance that the teachers did, and I read through it, and there was a couple things that were a little disheartening to me. Number one, I think the district did do a great job in telling the parents what the expectation was as far as sick kids. If your child is sick, they stay home. If they go to the office because of any kind of symptoms, they need to come home. I think they were very clear on that. So in the grievance, when it stated they did feel like the teacher knew if the kid was sick, if they were sent to the office, why they got sent back. I feel like that was not an issue, because I feel like the district communicated very well to the parents that wanting it to be done. I also felt that...
15 seconds.
Sorry, some of the things that were said about, like, the students and families not being able to stay at home or... I really wish to start with that, because I feel like there are a lot of teachers, not all, but some, that also aren't following that. So they said, again, parents, maybe can't be in touch with you because I'm there. I do also want to say, you know, I completely understand the district and the board and the superintendent. I say they're trying to respect the teacher's wishes, and they're here because that is a hard thing to do. The kids really do need to be in school. The teachers need to go to work. I have to go to work. They need to go to work.
Dana Anderson?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. My name is Dana Anderson. I live at 1225 Spence Street. I have three kids in the Ashwabhanan school district. My oldest is freshman, and my youngest, who are at Valley View. I'm not going to spend my two minutes telling you about the challenges, difficulties, and mental stress that is placed on my family, but please know for every person sharing their struggle with you, they are representing all the other families who are not sharing their struggle. Instead, I want to talk to you about responsibility. Aside from being a mother, I'm a registered nurse and manager of several departments, including infectious disease and pulmonology, both of which are heavily involved in the fight against COVID. So I absolutely understand the fear and obstacles that you people face. We in healthcare see this daily, but we do not have the option to hide from it. And with proper precautions, the vast majority of us have stayed perfectly safe, because as leaders in this community, we have learned to deal with it. We go to work every day and advocate for our patients. Myself, my fellow nurses, my colleagues, including doctors, nurse practitioners, physicians assistants, lab techs, just to name a few, took an oath to give high-quality care patients, high-quality patient care with goals of high-quality patient outcomes. Just as educators took an oath to give high-quality education to our children in hopes of high-quality outcomes, as educators, you are also supposed to be additional advocates for our kids. Virtual school does not offer high-quality anything, and you are not advocating for our kids. In healthcare, we have not been given an option to set aside our hope and forsake our patients. We realize that during this time, our patients need us now more than ever. However, the overwhelming feeling in the community is that the education system has put aside their hopes to our children for an unnecessary amount of time. Just like our patients in healthcare need us, our children need you now more than ever. I ask you today to uphold the oath you took to our kids and bring our kids back to school tomorrow and help get them on the road to recovery. There are no longer scientific theories of why you can't. Take responsibility. Honor your oath. Prove yourself to be a leader, and bring our kids back and provide them the education they deserve. What a great Christmas present this could be.
Kate Pomeroy?
Hi, my name is Kate Pomeroy. I live on 437 Caddis Grove Avenue. I have three kids that go to Ashwabhanan. I'm going to tell you how, why they need to go back to school, and virtual does not work. My third grader has a hard time wanting to go to classes. She's no longer motivated to go to school, is very... She's no longer motivated to go to school, is very distracted, and fights with me before even starting class. She is behind in most of her classes, and each, each day that she passes, she falls farther behind. The only thing that is helping her right now is that she is able to go to school three times a week and three hours each of those days. And you want to know why? Because she is in school with the teacher. She doesn't struggle nearly as much anymore because of that. My kindergarten goes to school every day for two hours. She loves being at school. But when she comes home, she struggles to want to get into her classes and assignments to get done. She misses and needs teacher interaction. She always, oh, she's already to the point where she feels she's already going to do something wrong with remote learning before she even starts. This causes her to shut down and not even want to participate like I know she does when she's in school. My four-K child just cries and gets upset that she can't go to school. She wants to see her teacher and enjoy her classroom learning. When she has to do it online and watch videos, she isn't as near as motivated or focused. She gets bored and is getting her pay attention for the length of time just staring at the screen is... Oh my God. Okay, so she, she can't pay attention for the length of time, and she's staring at the screen. It's very difficult for her. The only part she gets excited for is the projects that she does on Seesaw. My kids need to socialize and be with their friends. Their mental health is greatly impacted. Is this not important? We have to look into that. We all want to make, make sure our children's needs are being put first and the education isn't being affected. Thank you.
Subi Van Lannan.
Hello.
Hello, it's Subi.
Hi, I was actually asking as a meeting so that I could write letters to my daughter. But I'm going to kind of be away from that a little bit. My, I have four kids in the district, sixth, eighth, sixth grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, and eleventh grade. But yeah, being said, there's a lot of kids and a lot of stuff to do at home. They help each other, and I think it's unfair how we are beating the teachers right now and shooting them down. I mean, I think it's unfair. It is unfair. They're doing everything that they literally can. And I haven't seen, my daughter, I watch her things every day. They're full of information and learning and social time and interacting. Part view, you teachers are doing absolutely amazing. The ones I've seen at the high school, absolutely amazing. So I really just wanted to give a shout-out to that. And let you guys know, like, we care. Not everybody thinks the teachers are doing their jobs. That's all I really have. I just wanted to let everybody know that. Thank you.
Amy Brescher.
Hi, I'm Amy Brescher of the two-one-five Brooklyn. We have two boys at the high school, junior and freshman. Our freshman is doing okay. He told us he doesn't really feel he's learning anything, but at least he's getting good grades. He's doing all his work. He's motivated. Our other son, in third grade, he thought he might have ADD and we had tested. Borderline is what he came out and we decided not to medicate because the teachers, like, someone else had said are amazing and have made it so that he can learn. Well, he's not learning at all. He is literally getting up in the morning and sitting at the table all day long until midnight to two in the morning. The end of this semester, or the end of this last quarter, he had twenty-nine missing assignments on Thursday, the week before the quarter ended. He didn't get them all done. He failed English. He's a three-point old student or better since sixth grade. I'm sick of yelling at him. Our relationship is suffering. All we're doing is fighting and arguing and taking things away like someone else said. It's horrible. And he's, I mean, I'm going to... I don't, I don't even know what to say. It's just, it's awful. It's heartbreaking. And he has no fun in his life at all whatsoever because all, it's all been taken away because we've written calendars. We've made checklists of all his assignments to check off as he's completed them. We have been helping. I'm home with him, watching him so that he can't sneak YouTube. It's not working. They need to be back in school five days a week. Not this hybrid. The hybrid's not doing it. The hybrid was a person. They can't get their kids in school five days a week, their high school and their middle school. There's no reason why we can't do it. There's no reason that Swamnan can't follow Westsy Peer and do it and be in five days a week.
Michelle Jansen, are you online?
Yes, I'm in line. Thank you. Hi, my name's Michelle. I'm at seventeen-eight-five Corneille Road. I am a mother of two high school children. I'm a taxpayer. I'm also a staff member of the district, and I am required to report every day. For all of you that know me, I care about all the children. As anybody, I coached anything. It's never always been just about my kids. Tonight, it's about my kids. I just want to make a blanket statement about edutainment, and I thank that every day that only one of my kids has it for one class. I want to just say that I feel that the math department at the high school shortchanged themselves. They are wicked smart teachers that have a lot to offer, and it's very disappointing to know that my daughter's being taught by a video and she has chances to take quizzes over again. That was part view, or now in high school. So, and like you said, it's a shout-out to the teachers, but I feel like they shortchanged themselves. I know they probably didn't have a lot of control of that, but I just, just wanted to give my piece. My daughter needs lectures, and she needs live lectures from a U N D. Anyway, my son, we'll move on to him. My son lost the best part of his junior year when we went virtual. He got lost in the shuffle. Nobody cared about him. He knew that. I knew that. I was even told that I should let my son fail. As a parent with an unknown pandemic, let my kids fail? Really? He was busting his butt at work. It was a place where he felt important, he felt wanted, and he felt needed. Now, my son tried to move on with his future and applied for Start College Now program. We were two days late. School wouldn't budge. They said, nope, not doing it. So we chose to go on our own, sign him up for classes. He's enrolled in a program, a guest tutorial that starts in June. I got him enrolled in two college classes coming up this winter. Today, I find out that they want him to stay in school his whole senior year. He only has one credit left after term two. Do you think he wants to sit in a meaningless class?
Two minutes.
And do nothing? When he can be at N W T C earning college credits towards his degree after he got left behind last year?
Michelle, your time is up.
I just want to say that my son is an example of what I have Swamnan lost from this virtual learning. He will never, ever get his time back, and this was actually expensive to him. Please bring his kids back to school. We don't have any more kids losing when he is lost. It was such a pain in his system. Thank you.
Joshua Leish.
He was trying to use his time to me, so he's not here.
And then Amber Dunst, she's online.
Hi, I'm a member of Missland, twelve-twenty-six, Albert Avenue. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of my daughter. So just like to start off saying that she is open and enrolled at Pioneer. We chose this district over our whole district of Westsy Peer because of the smaller class sizes and comparable standards. Last year, my daughter was considered advanced. She loved school. This year, she's become an ice cube melting away. She starts out watching her videos. Shortly after she's sloping doodling on paper, and before you know it, she's melted onto the floor staring up at the table. She has made no progress this year. I'm ashamed to say she's actually forgotten how to spell her last name, something she's been able to do for three years. As a healthcare worker dealing with directly with COVID patients, I see no reason not to renew in-person learning. I'm a respiratory therapist, and I'm responsible for monitoring the respiratory patients for the post-acute branch by organization. We service thirteen counties. To this day, we have had zero pediatric patients added to our respiratory services due to COVID. We, the parents, know the risks of in-person learning, and we are able to make our own choices for our children. The board, whether intentional or not, has created a parents-first teacher showdown. The teachers are no greater risk than any other person working at this point. The spread of COVID being linked to in-person education just isn't there. Many other schools in our area are still in-person and have rudely adjusted without pulling the plug on education. How do you think our children view school at this point? Do you think they see it as an important part of the foundation of their future? Mental illness is already at an all-time high for our younger population. I would say it's covered health, like, our mental health, like, they did COVID. We, as a community, need to step up instead of adding to the society that is already failing our children. Kids need contact with kids. My six-year-old shouldn't be talking to me when she's thirty. They need structure and security. They need more people to be children accountable. And as a community, ensure them on instead of telling them what they can't do because of COVID.
Two minutes, Amber.
I close by asking you that at what point would you say irreversible damage has already been done?
I just want to see if there's, if people have come or if they're online. Cole Tipo. Alicia Pleno. And Jim Dennis. That's it.
Okay. Comments for the board? Ben Love said?
I think, first of all, I apologize for raising my voice, but I think I need to say that, I think it's, I think, and maybe I shouldn't say this, but I think it's unfair to say if you don't care about kids, you shouldn't be on this board because...
That was never said. I said, if, you said, if the reason why you're on the board is because of kids, then you should be there. But if you're not, if you're not, if you're not doing what you're doing because of the children, you're doing it for some other reason, whatever that could be, then, then that's not the right reason to be on the school. Right? That's, that's what I'm saying. I wasn't saying that you didn't care about kids. Not what I was implying.
So what I'm saying is that I don't know how many of you know personally what anyone on the school board does. So it's, it's, none of us are perfect. But I just want to say that every person who's on the school board here or virtually, they all, I can tell you, care a lot about kids. That's our job. And I, I took offense at that because you don't know what I do in this district. And, in all fairness, we haven't been given a chance to know. We haven't been...
And I didn't, and that's not what I said. You were hurt.
And don't take shots at it.
That's, that's how I feel. Like, it was a shot, and you didn't. So that's...
Did I take, I, I didn't take a shot at it. I said, I said for you to...
And I don't want to start, I don't, I, I can continue past that. I just felt I had to say that because it was on my heart. And it's, it's hurtful because I, because I actually am in the school. I volunteered with kids during this pandemic, just to help, to be an extra person. Not able to be six feet apart because an E L student cannot, you can't sit six feet apart and have an E L student who cannot speak English understand what you are doing. Okay? So that's why it's unfair to say some of those things because we do...
I think the reason why we said what we said, though, was because our kids are not in school.
Yes, my children are not in school either. I have children in the district.
Let's get, let's get, we're not going, we're not going to argue.
We're not going to discuss. This is our time.
So my point is, my only discussion point would be, I want them back, you said January eleventh.
Don't let us down again.
They need to be in on January eleventh.
Listen, respectfully, this is their, this is a private, public meeting, but they listen to you speak. Now it's their turn to speak. Okay? We didn't interrupt when you were speaking.
I can tell you that I am committed to them being there on January eleventh. I actually will be in the buildings on January eleventh. I will be teaching children on January eleventh. My children will be in school. I don't know which cohort. There are bigger kids. They will be in school. And so there's no, that's all I can say. There's nothing else that I can say that, again, that everyone's going to be happy with, but that would be my field, is that they're going back. As far as I'm concerned, this criteria that we're looking at, I think it's great what Jamie said, that it's a, like, engine light. It's something to look at, like, oh, well, maybe we need to look at this. We need to kind of be aware. That doesn't mean we close. That means maybe we look at one school, we look at a classroom, we look at something like that. I personally, if we need to come up, if we need to use a number as an engine light for that one part you wanted us to say, my vote would be the highest number because that's what we closed at. And honestly, if we had had the subs, which we now have, we wouldn't have had to close. The biggest reason we had to close was because we did not have a staff. And that will not be a problem because the district has done the excellent job of getting...
Because I know a couple people that are subs, and you'd never called them.
This isn't our time.
I know, but I'm just frustrated with the whole sub thing because I know people get...
So that's what I would say. I would say the highest number. Thank you, Jess. Thank you. And I really want you to be kind. Leave with grace. None of us are perfect. We are all living this. My son is a senior too. I run prom for heaven's sake, and I can't give that to them. And he must say, you know, I'm coming too. But my responsibility is not just to my kids. I have, I took this position, and I have to work out for the safety and the welfare of all. And at this point, that definitely means back in school, and I am committed to that. But to belabor the point and to just so... I feel there have been some unfair things said about teachers and just people in general that have just been hurtful because they've been done without understanding. So I would encourage all, including myself, to do better at that part. And that's all.
I agree with everything that you all have said tonight. We need to be back in school. January eleventh is our date. I have a number of recommendations with regards to the criteria that was presented, and I'd like to share it and hear what other board members think. First of all, when it comes to the community core information, I think it's fine as a guide. I don't want to see us managed to a number. You know, I, I, we hear from all of you, many of you in the healthcare type role, that we could be back in school today, and numbers have been extremely high. We just came through the highest numbers in the last two weeks, three weeks, that we've ever seen. And, and yet you're all saying you're fine to be back in school. Send your loved ones back to school. And I, you know, and I, and I've heard from many, many teachers and staff members that they want to be back in school. And, and I think it's time that we get them back into school. So I agree with that. I'm, I'm not comfortable saying that, that there is any kind of a, of a criteria that's going to be followed. So if anybody thinks that, I think the number around there, the highest number was eight-thirty-five, I don't want us to be held to that. That's fine for a guide. It's fine for criteria purposes, but it's, it's information. It's part of a decision-making process. As far as staff absences, that, I believe, and I'm open to comments, I think we need to split that into teacher absences, support staff absences, and food service absences so that it's, it's broken out separately. We can operate, and, and, you know, and I, and I think I proposed it to, to Keith and to Kurt earlier today, and we've talked about it in past meetings, that we can get volunteer parents to come and work in the food service. I worked a week in the food service. Keith's mother worked a week in the food service. Right in the height of all of this, as we were closing down in September, we know what, what it all takes, and if there are parents that have said they're willing to do it, and we create an email group, or whatever, Google dot group that we're going to manage from, that's now time for you to, you know, the rubber meets the rope. And if we're asking you to do it, we may need to call on you. We may need that at a moment's notice to keep a school going. You can't run a school. You can't speed the kids. They can't be there for eight hours and not have a meal. So just, just... So just, just be thinking about that. And I think we'll be challenging the group to, uh, have that in place. Breaking it down by, by teachers, by support staff and food service, and then looking at the types of roles and the, uh, the support that can be provided by others in the district so that we can go even above and beyond the twenty subs that we're talking about, um, I think is important too. And if there are other subs out there and that list can grow from twenty to thirty, let's do that. Um, let's see. Oh, and one other last point with volunteer groups, and, and I don't know exactly where this would fall, but it was said or brought up, um, earlier as well, that it could be in the custodial area as well. If it needs to be a clean, um, you know, in the evenings or on a weekend or something like that. I think that it's possible that volunteers could be used for something like that as well. Um, as far as student attendance goes, um, I, 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 you know, I understand that we have, that we have data. We have a lot of data. We have data going back a long ways, but I think we need to manage hotspots if they occur. Um, they need to be managed by building and by down to the classroom level so that if we do have an incident, um, and we have seen that in West of here and other districts, that if a classroom has an issue, then, then that classroom may be quarantined or asked to stay at home. It doesn't mean you shut down the whole school. Um, you know, and you go back to the numbers, the, not, not the deaths are the only thing that you look at because it's not, but the students are not at that greater risk. It's the teachers and the support staff that are at a greater risk and we've had, I don't know how many, what our total is, a number that have come down or contracted COVID. Um, I know we've had the entire kitchens, uh, staffs that have gone through it um, and continue to deal with, you know, aging parents and other, other family members that are also working outside of the building. So, um, student attendance is, uh, is important. Um, I think as far as the numbers go, we were talking earlier and I asked Mr. Ribbons for his recollection of it, the last time we had a major outbreak that required us to close the high school was in two thousand nine, when my son was a senior, I believe, a junior or a senior, I don't recall. Um, and we reached over forty percent before we closed the high school and did a three-day cleaning, I believe. Um, and then, you know, it was a long weekend and then they reopened. That was H1N1. Um, so I would advocate if we're going to try to place a number, that it be thirty-three or above. So.
Thirty-three percent, right?
Thirty-three percent and, and arguably it could be four.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, the community data, jumping back to that for a moment. Um, I think it's, it's quite likely that we could see that that number could spike and could be high. Yet at the same time, our levels are, are low. And that's managing it right down to the very local level, not just in county. The fact that we have, and for all of you and many of you are school choice, so you are in Green Bay or in the pier or surrounding communities. Um, I think it's important to know that we are not just Ashwabandha. We are the county. We are a big, a bigger market. So that's why we look at numbers from Brown County. So, um, I think that, um, we need to manage it all the way down to that local level. Um, I'd also advocate that if it comes in the future to a decision, um, to go virtual again, that our intention is to be live from January eleventh until June, June tenth, thank you. Um, that that be a decision made by the superintendent and the board, uh, not by a set of numbers that are pulled out of the air. Um, I like the comment of coexisting with COVID. We need to find a way to make that happen. I would challenge our coaches, our teachers, our counselors to individually reach out to students. We heard that loud and clear tonight and I think that's important. Um, and then I think it's important for parents, staff members, um, you know, everyone involved with, uh, education to take the steps, wear the masks, social distancing. This is probably the most dangerous place I have been in the last two months based on whatever this is, a hundred people, uh, tonight.
Then you have it on the Hobby Lobby.
And what the hell are people doing on Hobby Lobby, Walmart, grocery store? Those places are far more dangerous than our schools.
They're coexisting.
Yep, they're far more dangerous places than our schools. I'll just leave it at that.
Yes.
Uh, so people need to protect themselves and their families so that we can keep the buildings open. So that's my opinions based on, um, the criteria that we were given and, uh, the comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Paul?
Yeah, uh, yeah, thank you. So, um, I just want to throw out the saying that, you know, I'm very proud and honored to be on this, uh, school board. Um, I think I have the highest respect and, uh, you know, uh, for everyone that's on this, uh, school board and the administration. Uh, I, one thing I've been very proud of over the many years that I've been on this board is that, you know, the board members never has any kind of special interest and they've always acted in the best interests of the kids. So just want to throw that out there. I also want to thank, uh, you know, everyone for their emails, phone calls, text messages. And everyone for, you know, speaking up, you know, today at the meeting. I know that's not easy at times. Uh, especially, you know, talking about, you know, the situations at home, that's not very easy. Just want to, you know, say thanks and, uh, your comments are, you know, important and valued. So I just want to put that out there. Um, I want in-person, I want, you know, the kids with school, I want in-school learning. I want us to be in-school thanking the food, you know, service staff, uh, for their outstanding work, you know, um. And I also want to say thank you to Kurt and all the, you know, Jamie and the staff for all the hard work that the, you know, the, you know, that, uh, over the last few weeks, it hasn't been easy. Uh, phone calls, emails, you know, meetings, I'm sure. Um, as a board, we've asked a lot. We've had a lot of meetings and we've asked a lot of the administration and, uh, they have come back and, uh, delivered, you know, easy and every time. So, uh, you know, kudos to all of them as well. Very proud of that group. Looking at the, uh, criteria that, uh, Brian was, uh, just talking about, uh, for adjusting in instructional models, um. You know, looking at the, uh, community CDC, you know, numbers of eight thirty-five, you know, like everyone's saying, these are, uh, guiding criteria. It's, you know, I like the analogy of the check engine light. It's not a stoplight, it's not a go light. It's a check engine light that, you know, see, you know, as evaluation period of time. Um, and, you know, looking at the community CDC numbers, um, eight thirty-five is again, it's a guiding, you know, guiding criteria. I'm, I'm fine with that number. Um, looking at it, um, I, I don't put a whole lot of weight in that criteria versus the other two. And just looking at, you know, the, you know, the, you know, looking at that Thanksgiving, you know, Thanksgiving was supposed to be a super spreader, right? Well, according to the numbers as of people right now, I'm going to say that it hasn't been. Um, so I don't put a whole lot of weight to that number as, as much as the, you know, the other two. You know, for me, if you've been in part of the other meetings, it's all about, you know, you know, the, the staff absences. Um, you know, like Brian was saying, you know, if we don't have food, we don't have security, we don't have teachers, um, we don't have clean staff, then we really can't have kids in this school. So I really appreciate the comments, you know, from Kurt, you know, regarding that, you know, the building, the contingency plans. Uh, it says that we continue to look at that, hone that. And Brian kind of mentioned giving the, the, you know, the additional list from the community, you know, et cetera. So I know that work is ongoing, but I like to kind of see that, uh, you know, continue, you know, um, through this period of time here. Um, and also looking at the, you know, the staff, you know, absences, uh, you know, thirty, uh, and I'm not really looking at it as, you know, as that particular number. The way I look at it is that, you know, that, you know, um, we've said a couple of times, the quality of the education. Brian, you know, I kind of agree with your numbers, you know, um, I really don't want to look at it holistically. You know, I want to look at it, you know, by school and I'm glad that, uh, you know, Kurt and others have talked about that. You know, we're not going to look at these numbers and, you know, okay, one school is not doing so well, the other one is, is doing great, no COVID cases, you know, the other teachers are in place, we're not going to shut down the whole lot. You know, we'll get down to a point where we'll look at it at school level, we'll look at the class level. So I was very happy to hear that. Um, and I'll, you know, and really to kind of hone it down to that level where hopefully we don't get to a point where we have to, you know, shut down the whole lot and we can kind of control this as we go, you know, by really the school slash classroom level. Um, uh, the student attendance, you know, rates, you know, that, you know, we haven't talked about that one before, you know, um, uh, I'm over the thirty-three percent number that was thrown out there, um, I was twenty-five percent too. And, and again, it's a guiding, you know, criteria, you know, it's just, it's a point in time where we need to look at, you know, what's going on in those situations. Um, so, and really, again, you know, not as a district level, you know, really at, you know, the school slash classroom, you know, maybe activity, you know, type of, you know, event. So I'm glad to hear that, uh, we're not shutting down, you know, we don't want to shut down the, the whole system just because we hit a particular number. Um, you know, I, I don't think we, you know, we kind of, uh, we did that, you know, September, you know, not knowing they were better, they would, you know, forgive us. You know, this is our first pandemic, you know, so it's kind of hard to, you know, we've learned, you know, since then, in my opinion. Um, so I, I'm glad to hear that contingency plans are, you know, ongoing. I'm glad to hear that, uh, you know, we're still being with the teachers regarding their concerns who are mitigating, you know, the risk on their side. So with all that, uh, some kind of vibe to hear that we're, you know, continuing in those two areas. Okay, back to you. Thank you all.
Michelle?
Um, two questions first. Um, Kurt, with this plan that you've laid out, are you proposing that we would go back on January eleventh, no matter what the numbers were? And then two weeks later, we would use this criteria?
Well, I, I think that what I've heard from the board and, um, is we want to use this as we presented to all of you before, even the numbers that we used, we presented to you way back in October, was really about a guidance criteria. We're using it as guidance to help make good, sound decisions about the safety of our students and staff and community. And so I think we should be back in school on the eleventh. Um, and I think that we will use these numbers as a guidance to get, to open up our schools. I think we should open up and, and give it a shot, uh, firstly, um, and I guess that answers that question.
Okay, thank you. Um, so as far as, um, choosing, I, I, I do feel strongly that we need to pick criteria that, that we actually do follow. Um, and I, I guess the main reason is that we are asking parents to decide on second semester if they're going to choose remote or not. And so if we, um, choose a number and then we don't stick with that number, I mean, the parents are deciding whether to go remote or not. They, they have to make a decision based on something. So we should give the, a criteria and then we should stick close to that criteria. Um, where I'm.
How is Michelle?
What?
What number would you propose?
So, um, I realize that I'm more cons, probably the most conservative of the board. Um, I, um, I would now on anything happened to one, our wonderful teachers and our staff. So, I mean, the CDC number of two hundred hasn't changed. I realize that the, that mental health also needs to be taken into the equation. Um, and I feel for all those kids. I feel for all the parents that are struggling and I, I know it's, it's terrible. This is a very difficult position to be in. I've, knowing that, my number would be more like six to eight hundred. But I understand if the board wants to go higher, but I would still say that whatever others choose as a number, that if we choose eight thirty-five, that we stick to, maybe it's not eight thirty-five, if it's eight fifty, okay, but if it gets to nine hundred, like that's no, you know? We chose eight thirty-five. If you want to choose more risk, then put a higher number out there. Don't, don't say eight thirty-five as a guiding criteria, but then later on not vote on, on that number, not use that number at all or something way higher. So that would be my point, that parents have to choose based on what they're doing for second semester, based on what were these guidance criterias that, that we're going to lay out. So we should lay out something that we're going to follow, maybe not to the end. So like with the staff absences, you know, really I'm, I'm fine with, uh, what was recommended with the, the thirty because it's really with the staff absences is if we're able to run the schools effectively. So if that's thirty and that you will, um, I mean, I was going to get really picky with the numbers, but it sounds like it will be, you know, it's, it's, it's about if, I mean, really what comes to, comes down to if we can run the school and if it's each building has an issue, that it will look down the building level and if there's an issue in that building that, that it will be, um, taken care of or closed if that's for in-person and that's an issue. And then with the students, um, twenty-five to thirty-three, that, that's fine. I'm hi, I'm fine with a higher number for the students because that's on the students, right? Like it's really the students that are going to missing, missing out. If there's that many students in quarantine, they're just not getting as good of education. But if the parents would rather that, that if their kids in quarantine and they're not, that they would, they're going to take that chance of that many kids being, um, out of school because there's still going to be kids in school, then I'm fine with the higher student number. But I would really, um, like us to pick a, um, a number on that first number that we're going to, um, use as a guidance.
I thought my understanding was with this. And so Michelle, and I, I understand your point completely to that parents are trying to make a decision. So, you know, again, as many parents that we have here that feel very strongly one way, believe me, we have gotten the equal amount of emails and people that feel the opposite. So I totally understand that parents are trying to do what is right for their child and make an educated decision. Um, but my understanding with the plan was that, so we're looking at kind of these three guidances and then if we're hitting at least a couple of them, then if one isn't quite where we want it to be, but we're still managing the others, that we make that, that we can do that.
Correct. It's too hard.
Okay.
You know, and I, and I think that an important point to Michelle's point, all of your point is that these are numbers, right? These are numbers that are there. To me, it's more about trending down or trending up, right? And if it's trending down and we feel like we can project out, just like we're projecting out now. Jamie and I are on with Brown County data people almost every day. And, and so we are already predicting that Saturday and Sunday, our numbers are going to go up based on the amount of tests that have, have been, that haven't been processed, right? And so we're already banking that it's probably going to be, I think it was sixty-eighty-three today. It might be seven ten tomorrow, or it might be seven forty on Saturday. To me, it's more about, is it staying stable? Is, is it trending down? We feel confident? Or is it really exploding like it was, you know, you know, early November, right? And so to me, it's more about, is it trending down, staying the same? Or rather than, I hate to say eight thirty-five and it's eight thirty-six and we say, oh boy, we, you know, back to Brian's point, I'd rather have some flexibility and some guidance.
And is it important if the numbers in our schools are slow and manageable?
Right, right.
Then it's, then the number isn't as important anymore. So they wouldn't want to hold us to that. I don't, I don't like to manage to a number. When you do that, you're, you're forcing yourself to make decisions that you, uh, you would not make, you normally would not make. Anything else, Michelle?
Well, just to, just kind of add to that myself, you know, we're not, you know, managing through this number. Well, just to, just kind of add to that myself, is, you know, we're not, you know, managing through this number. It's really a, you know, a, you know, it's a trend that we need to, you know, look at. It, it's not, if we get to thirty, the magical number of thirty, we're not going to do anything based on that number. It's really based on all the other factors that are going on and what that, what that really means and what that means for the, the different schools or the different classrooms. Um, so it's, it's not just, you know, it's just a number to kind of, you know, make sure that, hey, you know, something's going on, it triggers a review. It doesn't trigger a decision, it triggers a review, so.
And, and you know, to fall on top of that, I just want to make sure that the board all understand my first point of, that the information, um, I, I read right over it. Staff absences is teachers and office staff as well as kitchen staff. And that's why I asked to break it out separately because we can operate the school if we have our teaching staff. We can operate it differently with the kitchen staff if we, if we need to. So I really think it's important to break these out and, and then understand what administration can do. For example, if we lose, I think our discussion this morning, if we lose the three ladies in the office at Valley View, it's pretty hard to run that office with volunteers. They, they know so much and they coordinate so much. So we need to understand what we could do, whether it's shifting from other schools or administrators being able to step in that understand the system and power school and, and what they're doing. But, uh, but that's different than, than the teachers in front of the kids. Um, and it's different than the, the staff that's in the kitchens preparing the meals. So that's why I would choose, I, I would recommend that we break that out and have multiple additional data points that we manage. Again, managing the hotspots, because it might be a, the hotspot might be a kitchen at Valley View this week. Next week, it might be a classroom at Pioneer. It might be a whole grade level at Parkview. You just, we don't know. And, and that's why all of you, please understand that this is, this change in every single data when you listen to what goes on in the schools every single day. We have been successful with bringing back kids on Wednesdays. Hundreds of kids are coming in. We have been successful having teachers and, and staff members in the schools um, during the course of the last, at least the last, uh, couple of months or a couple of weeks, I should say, not months. Um, and, uh, and, and now we've started the co-curriculars and we've been successful with that. So we, we're taking those baby steps that are going to get us to full time.
What's that?
Jay, can I just say something quick? Does everyone know the, the YouTube stream off audio for a second to restart the screen? We're good, but it's one. So do you guys think everyone else is getting taxed if they're getting the stream started?
I just want to think, well, you guys, I mean, it, it means a lot and, and it really, you have to understand how much of this is a burden on us. I mean, it's every, I don't know, I have hundreds, hundreds of emails and I read them and it's heartbreaking. I, I understand how you feel and, and I, I want you to understand that, you know, we made mistakes. I'll admit it, we made mistakes. If I go back to when we stopped in September, we should have, we should have put the brakes on and said, hey, can we get some other kids back into school earlier instead of closing everything down? Now going forward, I think we all understand that, that we need to get kids back into school. And the only way that we are not going to be back at school on January eleventh is if our governor tells us we can't be, or the health department tells us we can't be. So we're going to be back in there. Our goal, my goal is to have every single kid all day, every day, starting the second semester. We have to have. And then we'll look at, just, we'll look at these numbers and we, if we have, we have a classroom that's, that's been contracted, we take the classroom out, not the whole school. If we have, um, eight teachers at Pioneer that are out, then we, we put our, our support staff in there. We try to get everybody covered. And it's not going to be easy. It's not going to be easy. But our goal is to get through to, to the end of school. We have to be able to do that. I like the idea of thirty-three percent for students, just because of the fact that, okay, if kids are quarantined, the, a classroom is quarantined, that includes that thirty-three percent. Those kids aren't sick, but they're quarantined, so we have to include them. Um, staff members, I mean, I think we can go up to forty staff members if it's not teachers. If it's not people that have direct contact with our kids. I think we can go a higher number, but we have to look at it at case, case basis. And if it's a, that's a situation, then, then we just shut down part of it, not everybody going down. We got forty teachers out, well, that may be, that may mean all of Cormier or all of, uh, Valley View, not the whole school district. This has been very, very difficult on all of us. And, and you guys, I, I feel for you. I mean, I feel fortunate, but I went through the school district a long time ago. My kids went through this school district, all K-12, and they've gone, uh, and are still going to get home with us. My daughter's working in the basement. She's been working in the basement for the last nine months. We see each other once in a while, I'm working from home. It's not the best situation to be in. It's not, and I understand, you can, you go stir crazy sometimes. So I feel for you guys. So what my, my suggestion would be is obviously we're going back to school with, with Kurt's proposal and beginning the second semester, we would get the kids in all day, every day. And then as far as gating criteria is concerned, not gating criteria, but suggestive.
Guidance criteria.
Guidance criteria. I think the thirty-three percent for students. And I don't want to put a number, just like Kurt said, on our community. Three weeks ago, we were at thirteen hundred. Now we're coming back down, which is great. So we're back down to almost, we were less than eight hundred, right?
Six eighty-three.
That's fantastic. That's a great number. But I think if we can stay like, and, and a trending number down and we're not creeping up to that thousand number, eight fifty is a good number, but I don't, wouldn't hold it tight to that number. I think that, um, the other thing then, like I said, with the, with this, with the staff, if we've got subs that can cover the teachers or cover the people that are in direct contact with our kids. I think that's a big important thing. And, um, if we can do those things, I think we're going to be successful the rest of the year. And again, like I said, we've made mistakes. We can't go back. We've got to move forward, we've got to move forward and then progress.
Thank you. And I would, can I have one other thing? I, I almost.
I'm waiting for you guys to tell me what you want me to do.
Any mic over here, too.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the last hour, you get forgotten.
I'll say my one. I just, the way I look at it with the high school, could, um, for you who don't know me, um, I have two kids. I have one who's a sophomore in college now, but with growth, and I have two in high school still, freshman and a senior. And hybrid is not ideal for them. I work a lot, I have worked over this full time since we've been closed. I was working sometimes every day, three days a week, with kids that were being brought in the school through Parkview. It's also difficult, the hybrid with, you know, or whatever. So I look at the full-time, um, secondary kids as almost phase six, right? Because we've talked about phase one, two, three, four, five. So five, yes, we're getting back in, but I don't want to forget about the older kids that are still not fully in. So I feel like that's phase six. And this, I want to do it safely. Ideally, I would completely agree with Jay. I do want to also make sure we're checking with our nurses and our, making sure we have the room because some of those classes are full and there's no way you can socially, so I think we have to look at some of those things. But I do think ideally, that is the next goal. And it's an active goal that we are moving towards, not one that we're just talking about. Sorry, go ahead.
No, no problem. Um, for those that don't know, I'm a rural representative, but I don't get involved, but I just get, I work, like, voted on. Yeah, I appreciate that and I appreciate everyone on the board and support them and, yeah, teach you their views. If they don't have different views, then we're not going to go together. And I'm an advocate for being back in school for the whole time and, yeah, so it's great to get this conversation, this one on that we're going back. Hearing the conversations, the emails, I'm a parent of two high schoolers and a fifth grader. And so I can relate to all your stories. My heart breaks. There's days where you feel like, you know, you, at the end of the day, you go in your bed and, well, like, where did I feel as a parent today? And it's, it's very hard and that's why I want to make sure that, you know, we're looking at the data, but that really wants to make sure we're looking at the mental health kids. And I've been advocating that since the beginning. Um, as a former youth pastor and pastor for twenty years, I will stat now these kids a lot of times and talk with them. Kids that cut themselves and suicide and, and bad homes and all these things. So to hear the stories, it makes my heart break for that, to see. My wife created that, so I'll go for that right now. She put a lot of work in, she spent a whole day following the health department.
That's awesome.
And getting data that's just not out there.
You can't find them.
Yeah, and so she talks to her people and she pulled her strings to get this data and to talk about the suicides that are out there. Mental health is a huge thing. So just looking at, looking at that, you know, um, looking at that core number and, you know, I appreciate all the data because this is basically what we had to ask for. Um, that core one, then there's no data, there's, there's no data, clear data for just the four through eighteen. So that makes it really hard to look at that core one data clearly. Um, and so that's why that one's hard. And then the staff, you know, I agreed with what you said, the forty, yeah, going up to thirty-three and forty percent for, for student absences. The thing that really makes it hard is, the numbers are great, what worries you with numbers is flip-flopping. And I don't want us to go back and forth. I want us to get back in the school, as, as you've talked about, and make it work. Let's make it work all the way to the end. That's not, you know, if we get to eight thirty-five and I know you also that, you know, that we're not going to use that, hey, we're, we're going back virtual. I want us to stick it through. And Jay, glad to hear, you know, going every day. I'd like for high schoolers to get out of that hybrid mode too, and go every day at school. So, um, again, thank you.
One other thing I'd like to say though, okay, let's say we're up at nine hundred, nine hundred and fifty, but our school numbers are good. Then we're still staying in the school. Because what happens in, in Brown County doesn't necessarily mean that it's happening here at Brown County. Our kids and with our staff.
Okay, are we aware that, the, um, Jamie, have you looked at, the DHS now has, um, a certain set of data that is by school district?
Yeah, but it, it's a little miss, it's a little misnomer. It's not school district population, it's people who live within the school district. So it's not actually like the students in that school district. It's just all the residents who live in the school district boundaries.
Okay.
We have a third of our students there come from outside of Ashwabon.
Right, so kind of Brown County is our numbers.
Correct, correct.
I agree.
Correct. And when I did, just so you know, when I did look at that, um, and I looked at it compared to all of the districts, we're all Brown County districts, there's not a whole lot of variability between us and the other districts. But they're all.
From the Department of Health stuff.
From the Department of Health stuff. But that, that, the, the people who live in Ashwabon have a very similar percentages to people who live in Brown County. That's not a surprise, right?
Michelle, my point was, is if our local numbers are, are students and our staff numbers are in check, we don't shut school down, even though the, the COVID numbers for the Brown County are high.
Hey Jay, I, I guess I would agree with that, um, because I think the staff at the C's, uh, then the student tennis rate is, uh, it would weigh more in my mind, you know, versus the community CDC numbers because they can be misleading at times, I think. Because, you know, especially with this, uh, you know, again, getting back to, you know, Thanksgiving is supposed to be a hotspot. Our numbers are supposed to skyrocket. Yeah, I don't know if we really know for sure exactly what's, you know, going to happen and when. So I guess that would weigh, you know, more on the other two than the, uh, community CDC number.
Well, and I guess that's why, um, I think they've done a very good job at putting together this criteria and saying two out of three. However, I think that our, the staff numbers have sort of trended with the Brown County numbers. So I don't think that when the Brown County is going up, that we're not going to have any issue. If Brown County's high, I think we are having an issue too. But we can see how that goes.
And we may have persons that aren't reported now because the kids are at home. Um, so they may not be reporting as absent because they don't have any, uh, symptoms or they're not, you know, they're not ill. Uh, we don't know that. So once we get back in school, whether parents keep their kids home, that will tell us if we are having a higher number than what's been reported up till now. Uh, I, I just want to say one thing too, that, that I didn't say earlier is that, you know, since March, uh, I have been so unbelievably impressed by teachers uh, and staff members and administrators who never, ever thought one year ago that they were going to be doing any of these things. Um, they've invented programs, um, they have, uh, they have spent hours and countless hours. All of you here, you have no idea the kind of hours that our teachers are putting in to make things work for the kids in a virtual setting that they didn't ask for, that, that it's kind of been thrust upon them. And they've just done outstanding things. And yet we all understand that, that that isn't, um, it, it isn't giving the, the result that, that you all expect, that we all expect, that the, the community expects. So, um, you know, so please don't, don't ever feel as though the teachers or your kids' teachers are not doing something because there was a fifteen-minute, you know, blurb in the morning or a packet of work sent home to them. Realize the hours and hours that go into it and the hand wringing and the stress and the frustration that they go through on a daily basis. I haven't, I haven't talked with a teacher yet that hasn't talked about the hours and the weekends and the evening times that they're, that they're doing things with, uh, preparation. So, or extra time that they're spending with kids separate. I have, um, I just, I just mentioned one that talked about evenings uh, because the parents were going to be around. So now they could do a, a quick meeting with the child and the parents to have conversations, to talk through some of the work so they, that that child stayed on track. Seven, eight o'clock at night. Just please be respectful of the teachers.
Okay. Um, I know at one of the last meetings, we've already approved, we're back to school. We can do many things.
Are you hearing what you, you need to do with criteria?
You can approve the criteria at any, if you want to ask them.
Well, you can ask to make a motion. I mean, you guys can make a motion on any of the numbers that you want. Jay, but Jamie, an idea, just so you guys know, you asked us to bring back local data, we did that. Um, we gave you some ranges, we gave you some numbers. It's up to you guys now to decide what you think those numbers should be and Jamie and I will make it work. And, and we'll have it up in one, okay?
Is there general agreement to break out the staff, um, staff absence number?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm probably breaking it out.
Okay. That, that's, that's the biggest one, if you ask me, is the change of making that a, um, three different numbers. And then I think I'd like to see the volunteer list development. Asking parents what they're willing to do, are they, do they have the time? And, and realize they have to all go through background checks if they're going to come in contact with children?
Yeah, we do require that.
You do require that. You should all, you should all do that.
So is there an action item with us or are we saying, what are we saying?
Well, we are, I thought we already approved that we're going back January eleventh for the last, that other meeting. This would be to approve this guiding.
I don't want to approve this guidance. I want to wait until we make changes and make the changes that we discussed. Now I realize our next board meeting is not until January thirteenth.
But that doesn't mean we won't need it then.
I would, I would miss all of you.
Ryan, understand that you have the ability as the board to make a recommendation on what you suggested earlier and what you could draw on that.
Okay, so without seeing the end result.
Yeah, yeah.
These things, if, if, if COVID nineteen hasn't done anything, it's taught us to be fluid and taught us to be adaptable, right? And, and so just because we adapt it or we take this today doesn't mean that we might not change it January eleventh or February board meeting or whatever the case may be. January 11th or February board meeting or whatever the case may be. And I'm not pushing you guys to approve anything. I'm just, it gives me some guidance to have that conversation with our administrative team, start in our planning, start in, and, and work with all of you to, as we move forward. And so, uh, again, I'm not pushing you guys to, to do it, but you certainly can prove something tonight to the suggestions you had. You don't have to go with what Jamie and I had, we just gave you a ballpark of what we thought you guys want, okay?
And we could say that we want to approve it with an approximate number of 835, but with the staff number broken out and the student number 33 or whatever.
So if I see this, I, I know, um, the way that our recording system works that, I know for sure we can break it out to teachers on one side and then support exempted administrators on the other, for sure. Anything more granular than that, I have to find out. But I know that we can divide those two groups up.
I think those were the three.
Okay, yeah, so I'm, but, so there's, there's two bins that I'm aware of. I don't know, I, I'll find out if we can go more granular than that, but for sure we should do that.
I think Nancy would say that.
Yeah, I, I, so I just want to make sure that you guys have that.
And I think that, to your point, like that, it's the, the teacher for the ones we need to sub for, which we have, and the others, you don't need to sub for, many of those.
We need a volunteer list.
Well, we need a volunteer list, but it's okay to separate them that way, right?
Correct. And, yeah, so I would, I mean, as part of the motion, and I'll, I'll take that motion, but I'll say that, that we should be developing that volunteer, uh, list uh, to support the food service side of the house as, and, and custodial if we think that will become an issue.
And our supervisors, all that.
Right, and I'm sorry, and new duty supervisors in addition to the, to the kitchen staff. Um, I'm not sure about the office staff, if that is volunteer work.
Pretty nice skill set there, Brian, that's pretty challenging.
I know. Confidentiality, sure, so I don't know if that's something that could be done volunteer wise.
No, we can't do that.
Okay, so.
But we can be flexible within our buildings to make changes to that.
But I think a big key thing here is, is gonna be two out of three. We have to be able to hit two of the criteria out of three, with, with staff, students, and then with the county numbers.
And, and I, and I hope it can be updated much like the criteria is today, because I look at that data every day.
So the, that dashboard that I displayed, um, so it can be updated daily, but understand that, well, when we're, right now, our absentee data probably isn't really good until the following morning. Just to be sure, we have to follow up with people.
Sure, it'll be better once we're.
It will, that's what I'm saying.
So what we're getting today, and, and I think it's two o'clock with updates.
Yeah, actually, so I've been, normally, um, our staff absences and our student absences, the reasonable and everything was defined pretty well, like two to 30, so I would do that, that would be.
So later each day, that follow-up data.
So to be clear, what happened?
Hey Jay.
Yeah.
Two out of three.
Yes.
Hey, uh, to your point there, that, uh, um, you know, you know, even if we hit two or three, you know, all that means is that, you know, we triggered a review, right? That doesn't mean that we're closing down anything. It just means that, uh, you know, we're engaging, you know, a little bit more action to, you know, find out what's going on, and then, uh, you know, figure out what the trends are and we're managing to the hotspots, if there are any, right? So that's kind of not clear in here. And then I think the other part of this is that, uh, you know, the, the numbers, you know, but, you know, I, the reason why I was confused at the beginning of the meeting is that, that the numbers, I didn't see the numbers by school slash classroom. That, uh, that's where we're actually getting down to that level, you know, of review. Is that correct?
I think it's in there with the numbers of, uh, by school. Um, I don't know what page this is.
On, on the dashboard, there'll be both main, but then there will be, up in the upper left-hand corner, there'll be secondary pages, and one of those pages will be every school that's.
Okay, every school can be broken out separately.
Yeah.
So Jennifer, is it possible that you understand what's out in that motion?
And, and, uh, Jay, I guess I would also, instead of trying to list out, you know, all the different critical roles here, why don't we just leave it to, you know, the critical roles as identified by the principals and the superintendent? You know, they can, uh, kind of list out what the, you know, the critical roles are, because we're gonna miss something if we kind of try to define it here today.
Point, Paul.
Yep.
Okay, so do we get a motion this?
I'll make a motion, all those things that we just.
I don't know if you got that?
And I'll stay after you want clarity.
What do you want, what do you want the student to be at?
33.
33.
Staff is like a year four category? Yes. And are you having an overall number?
So.
No.
You, so here's my question to you, the percentage wise, that other districts and things that use it's always kind of been staff percentage between like 10 and 15%?
Okay.
I could.
You could say 15%.
I could say 15%.
Put that in there.
As staff, for, for our teaching staff, right? Or, or for, for both bins, or whatever.
For each of the, each of the bins.
Yeah, okay.
So we're not gonna take an overall?
15%.
Well, 15%.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the CDC number.
That will still be 835, but I can get the tip check.
I mean, it's, it's a guiding number, and that's approximately where we were in September when we, when we.
Well, it was the number when we closed.
When we took the, when we took the, the step by recommendation from the community and medical advisor.
Yeah, we didn't just pull that number.
We didn't just pull that number, just, you know, I want everyone to know that. It wasn't an arbitrary number, and that's why we don't want to manage to an arbitrary number.
All right, so again, I know that's a guidance number, that we 35, I would gain kind of points of the two, other two numbers.
Or more important.
Well, we're saying, we gotta get to a group. So, I mean, I don't see how, if our staff members are so out of control, we don't have enough. You know, I mean, I think that speaks to itself, like if honestly you have 50% of your teachers down, you can't possibly manage that, you know what I mean? Like, if you have half of your student population gone, you can't, you know what I mean? So I think these, this is a, I feel like this makes sense to me in terms of how we can actually run a school, even if the community numbers are high, if we have our students and our staff. I mean, that makes sense to me, I don't know.
So we had two out of three, we have review, does that mean another board meeting, proper review? Is that, I just want, I just want to make clear.
You know, honestly, you know, we, it's, I mean, you have scheduled meetings once a month. We're not in a normal school here. If it means we need to meet weekly or on a moment's notice, we have to do that. That's just part of the.
Appreciate your flexibility, I know that we call you at the last minute.
Can I ask one more question? Why can one of January 4th not be considered? And I'm just curious, because it hasn't really been addressed at all. Like, January 4th, why can't, why is that not being considered?
I'd, I'd call it, well, if it's all right, you guys, let me answer that. For me, it's an abundance of caution. We heard guidance, um, from, everything from the national level down through the state, down through the local, that there was going to be a huge spike following Thanksgiving. And now, while we haven't seen it, and, and trust me, I spent two hours last night and this morning trying to find out why that number hasn't happened. And the, the most, what, the brightest information I could find was that people got tested before they went home or before they traveled prior to Thanksgiving. And now they're back, they don't have any symptoms, they feel fine, so they're not going in and having testing done. So the testing numbers have come way down. That doesn't mean there aren't cases, it just means that the testing is weighed out, which is why that number is so irrelevant in my mind, that the percent of positive test number doesn't, doesn't do anything for me, because the numbers fluctuate every single day. So we're at Bay 12, I think, right now.
Day 13.
Day 13, okay. And my understanding was is that it's a 14-day incubation period. So if it's gonna be blamed on Thanksgiving, it's gotta happen in the next couple of days. We're gonna see an increase somewhere. And now you have Christmas. So our guidance has been, Christmas is another one of those bigger ones that, that may be even larger than Thanksgiving. So the chance, chance that it could happen is, is very great. Um, so out of an abundance of caution, we picked the January 11th date, which gives us approximately that, that 13, 14 days from, uh, from Christmas. So that if there is gonna be an outbreak, and if it is, you know, we'll see it, we'll see it before we come back.
It's about sustainability, Brian. You know, our goal is to be January 11th, and, and we've said it many, many times, saying, when it's ready to can, our goal is to go from January 11th to June 10th. And we're trying to create a, a stable environment. And I talk to my colleagues and other superintendents in districts that are in person. That's one of the things that keeps them up at night is that instability of kids going home for two weeks and two days, coming back, come back again, two weeks. And so we're trying to create an environment that's stable. We understand your concerns, we don't really understand, because I don't have young kids, I have adult children, so. We sympathize with your concerns, but we also want to create some sustainability, right? We want to be able to be January 11th to June 10th. And you can clearly hear from the board here tonight that that's our goal, right? And we're going to be open on January 11th.
Can I ask one question regarding the quarantine period? The CDC has changed that exposure, um, period from 14 days to seven, depending, depending. Has that been, will that be updated?
Yep, so, good question, thank you. Um, Keith and I met with our school nurses yesterday, um, and Jolie Smith, our human resource, who does our staffing, uh, around, just so you guys know, there is no contact tracing happening outside the district, okay? And I'm not casting blame on anyone, our contact tracing is happening internally, right? Our school nurses, maybe someone viewing this room has gotten called. Our school nurses are doing all of our student contact tracing, and our human resource department's doing all of the staff contact. That's not happening outside, and I'm not casting blame on Department of Health, they're extremely swamped and busy as well. But understand that all that's happening internally. So I, I say that just to give kudos to our two school nurses and to our human resource person who are working many, many hours, right, uh, to try to, to do, keep kids in school. We have decided to adopt the 10 and 10 and not the 14, but it's also understand to important to know that the 10 is if you don't have symptoms, right? If you have symptoms, it's still the 14, but we are going to go to the 10 and 10.
Question about spring break then, are we gonna address that when it comes? Or are we gonna prematurely say, hey, spring breaks this day, you're not coming back for a week? Because of the holidays, it seems like the holidays are what's driving factors in some of those decisions.
I, I think, that's a good question, Don. I, I think that maybe we'll look at the next couple of days, you and Thanksgiving, we'll look at what happens over Christmas. Maybe it's not gonna have the impact we thought, right? Um, and the answer is, if people could travel outside Wisconsin, probably safer than in northeast Wisconsin, right? And so, um, so, uh, I think we'll evaluate that at the time.
Okay.
Can I also ask one more question regarding the criteria for going back in person every day for the higher, higher grade levels? My son is struggling as a tenth grader, he needs to be in school every day. I would want to know the criteria that you will determine that everybody will be back every day.
You know, so we're, again, that's a fluid, because we're looking even at, we're evaluating our Wednesdays where we have about 200 high school students coming in, kind of look at that success. We're looking at our co-curriculars, um, and what kind of success we're having with our, our students, athletes, and our kids who are practicing, our encore, our math team, our academic teams at the community. All of those are kind of giving us data to say, no, we feel pretty confident now. And so we'll use those first two weeks to say that we feel confident that we can start that second semester. But again, we're gonna be evaluating, trust me, every day, to say, do we feel good? Staff, student numbers are down, staff numbers are down, we feel good, let's start, um, all in person in the second semester.
What is the date of second semester again, Mark?
It's January 20th, yeah. So understand the second week too, we deny a school on Martin Luther King Day on Monday, and the end of the semester for teachers to do grades and all that is on Friday. So that, that's a short recorret, right, there's only three days of school left.
All right, you want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion if Jennifer is.
You got your, your information, Jen? Yep. Anyways, you got a motion in a second? Any other comments? Roll call, vote. Bandy Creek, aye.
Mr. Chal, aye.
Hey, Lan, aye.
Eric, an aye.
Trons, an aye.
Motion carries, five zero.
So I hope everyone listens closely, like, this is important. I know I always say that, but please, and 10 after 10. Communication from me and our administrative team and our district is gonna come out either tomorrow or Friday regarding what happened here tonight, okay? Also around the plans that are going to happen on January 11th, okay? We are all asking all families to watch for this, because there's important information in there. A couple of things that I, I want to point out. There's some more, I know that all of you here are really passionate about being in person, but as one of the board members mentioned, we have just as many who are passionate about that, okay? And some of them are gonna make choices. We need to be able to handle those choices with staffing. So we're gonna have to make some staffing decisions based on what people choose, okay? So people listening and everyone in attendance, we're asking all families to watch out for this communication and then complete a required task. Please help us out. Commit to what you're planning on doing in, in person or virtual on January 11th. By Wednesday, December 16th, that's next week, we'll have a survey as part of that communication. Please, please, please complete that. That helps us in our planning, so that we know our, we have some high numbers and some of our grade levels are on virtual, we want to be able to plan, we might have to add additional staffing. And so we, we need your help in order to answer, um, those questions, okay? So please, please tell your other friends, everyone, complete that survey. Uh, we do not hear from you, it's not that we don't want you to do it, but we'll take a passive-aggressive approach. And we don't hear from you, we're gonna assume you're gonna stay with what you currently are doing, okay? And what you are asking for, but we would prefer you to fill it out, please. We know that there will be parents who are originally in person who want to come in. So again, we need those numbers in order to make that, that point happen. The second thing I wanted to share, two things. We are gonna have possibly some bumps in the road, right? We need your help. If, if, if your child has a fever, we're going to send them home, right? Help us out. We don't want to send them, we want kids in person, but it, it's really hard on our buildings when parents say, I'm not coming to get them, right? And now we've got kids and possibly affecting other kids. And again, we know that's low, but still, all of that doesn't help. So please, work with us, give a call and say your child needs to go home, okay? We really need your help. Okay, we're in this, you guys have said it many, many times, we're here to volunteer, we're in this together, please do that.
Kurt, can I, can I have one, one quick point to that? What you just said, you know, when the student athletes were here a few weeks ago, asking, um, literally almost begging for the opportunity to get back to their, their programs and whether it be academic or athletic, um, we challenged them to leave their friends and leave their families, and all of you want in person. So now go out and leave your friend groups and your kids' friend groups with the, uh, with the goal of staying in, in person. You're the best advocates for it, you know, we can say what we want to say, they'll write it in the newspaper, in the back, but, but it's up to you all to do it.
Part of that, I'll get you just.
Yep.
Part of that communication tomorrow or Friday possibly might include that Google Doc is signing up. So if you're interested, come on, we'll have you, uh, do a background check, and we need support, right? We need help. Uh, we don't know if we'll need you right away, or down the road, but please, if you're interested, uh, I encourage you to do that. Again, that might take a little bit, because we have to do background checks. Your child's safety is our utmost importance, and we're not gonna put somebody in until we've done a background check, okay? If you are interested in subbing as a teacher, please contact Nancy Pierce. She is one of my assistants, we're right in the main office, right here, the first person you're gonna see. She is the person that'll get you going and get me picking up, and we'll get you on the list tomorrow. We'll get you on the list tomorrow, trust me. So if you are serious about subbing and you have all the paperwork done and ready to go, please contact Nancy Pierce and we'll get you going, okay?
All right. You go, Kevin?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, I was just for my call.
Oh, um, I just had a question, like, if my kid, like, if they throw up or something and it's just like, you, not COVID, but it's just like the flu, does she have to get tested in order to come back to school, or does she have to wait like seven to 10 days to come back?
So I'm not a health expert, so we'd have to ask our school nurse that exactly. So, uh, in our telemetry, that would be Lori Powell is our school nurse, and 612, that would be Mary Jo Biden. So I encourage you to reach out to her.
I just have a question, trying not to be able to answer, but, um, if our son already had COVID and the classroom has to quarantine, does he have to quarantine as well? Or is that, is that a nurse question as well?
That'd be a nurse question, we probably would quarantine, because we probably would have to quarantine the teacher there. So we want not to move him to a different room, we want him to have his same core teacher, right?
Got you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I just want to say, uh, when we, our family contracted this a while ago, and the school nurse was. Yeah, and I just want to say, uh, when we, our family contracted this a while ago, and the school nurse was tremendous in helping us. So I just want to look forward to all the, the school nurses.
Thank you. They're working really great.
Okay, uh, we've got a couple more items. If you guys want to stay, that's great. Um, if you guys want to go, that's, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
No, we're not, thanks.
Very good.
It's all good, taken? Thank you very much, very kind, appreciate it. And we're going to kill the boys. Because he's not in that class. I know. And I was. John, thank you for having us. Because I think these things that I have to. I think so, I'm sure. Doesn't know, so.
I shouldn't have to do that difficult.
Okay, um, we have, uh, excuse me, um, next action item is, uh, bylaws and policy updates, second read. It's basically, I don't know if there's any questions on, there was no questions first time. Make a motion on that.
I move to approve the second read of the policy items that presented.
Second.
You have a motion in the second? Voice vote.
Uh, Andy Creek, aye.
Biscuit Show, aye.
Bayland, aye.
Kerrigan, aye.
Tronson, aye.
And motion carries in our last one, uh, board certification of the district crisis plan.
Tammy and Brian, are you still awake?
We're here.
Wake them up.
We're here.
Why haven't you been out here for all the?
Yeah, yeah, we needed you.
This is something we do every year.
That's required to do.
It's required to do. Um, we presented the crisis plan. We, right now, have, um, included a section on pandemic plans in the crisis plan. Obviously, we're building, the plan is we fly it, so next year at this time, hopefully, we'll have a much better, um, complete plan for that. Um, Brian, I really have to commend him, and he just needs to spend thirty seconds of your time, and I know how tired everybody is, but um, he has been doing a lot of research on some of the districts who have had active shooters. He's reached out to them, and I'll let him talk, because it's amazing, and we'll be adding that to our plan moving forward as well.
Yep, so we, we decided as a group that we should reach out to people that went through it in our area, so um, I did reach out to the Ashkosh School District and talked to their dean of students, and it was really, um, eye-opening of some of the things, because they went through it, so they could give us some of the facts that, think about this, they've been replanning and going through their plans again, so when Tammy says it's a fluid plan, definitely is. One of the things that we're really working on is the reunification of students at our sites, um, because there's one thing about getting kids safely to the site, but then it's getting it safely, or getting them safely to the parents as well, so um, that is something that we're working on, so it's ever-changing. I will say, to give a shout out to Brian Amundson, he's been really working well with us. I think, we, we always say it, the, uh, Ashwaban and public safety is such an asset to us. Um, and he's been going to all the sites and talking about traffic flow, talking about reunification, talking about um, how we're going to get to the sites and giving us tips for that as well, so.
Yeah, we can't say enough about our collaboration with public safety. You saw it tonight with Jeff. Brian is on all of these meetings with us. Um, Brian Amundson met with us again yesterday. Brian and I called just a special meeting to talk about some things, and he's, he's amazing, as are all the public safety people we work with. So we have a great collaboration. I feel very confident that hopefully we never have a crisis, but if we do, I feel like the district and public safety really team well, and hopefully, hopefully, um, we don't ever have to use any of the plans, but I, I really feel like we have some good potential.
And another thing that we will be working on is, we will be updating the website, as I've been going out and looking at other school districts' websites. They, they do a really nice job with videos of talking about all the different drills that we do, um, to keep our sta, uh, schools safe, and talking about the Alice Drill. So we're, we're working on that for the websites as well.
Okay, does the plan include, um, the, the therapy dog? In any way? I, I, I think when we talked about the therapy dog probably almost a year ago, you know, as a de-escalation tool? If there's, you know, students that are out of control, or, you know, that something could happen, if they're, if the dog is in the area, they could help them de-plate.
That's, that's, that's a really good question, Brian. I will have to go back to the plan, um, to see if there would be a spot to add the facility dog in there, because possibly, um, it may fit. It certainly does fit with a lot of stuff that we do day-to-day with our PPIS and all of our other,
Yeah.
all of our other systems. But yeah, I will go back and check on it. That's a great question that I, that didn't. Yeah, I'll have to check on that.
Yeah.
That's a great, that's a great suggestion, though. We can certainly look at that as well. I would think the dog would obviously be involved. Jeff and Jackie would probably be at any of the sites helping deal with it, so I would assume the dog would be there too. Any place Jeff is, the dog will be.
Sure.
So I would assume the dog would be heavily involved with that as well.
Okay.
But great question.
All right, can we get a motion?
I'm going to read the criteria plan. I have to finish it.
Second.
You have a motion in the second, voice vote.
Bandy Creek, aye.
Biscuit Show, aye.
Bayland, aye.
Kerrigan, aye.
Tronson, aye.
Motion carries by zero.
It's quite the plan. Thank you for putting that together.
It's so comprehensive.
It's a work in progress. It's, it's evolving for sure, so.
Or to parent communications, anything?
No, I handed a couple of cards to all of you. Hope you have a chance to read those. Basically, Michelle and Paul, they were thank yous for, um, some of our family members in our district where they have had, uh, passing of local ones, and we have sent, did do something to them, um, so, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, um, our next regularly scheduled board meeting is Wednesday, January thirteenth. All fair.
Aye.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Michelle, thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Have a great Christmas, you guys.
Thank you, you too.